There's a motion.
Must be.
A motion?
Yeah.
You got a blind side of this bill?
I don't, can we make a motion without it being advertised?
Potentially, y'all might want to discuss it after the current business items.
They might be interested here. We'll see if they stick around.
Where do we get these chairs? Where's the maintenance? There we go.
I'm called to order the meeting of the April Planning Commission, regular docket. We have a quorum. Welcome, y'all. I love citizen participation, so it's good to see all of you here. It gets lonely when there's nobody here to listen to us talk. So, I will start tonight's meeting with the Commissioner's report. Mr. Mahendra.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, citizens. I attended three committee meetings over the past month. The Board of Architectural Review meeting on March 13th was, which was a makeup day for being snowed out in February. During that meeting, there were nine projects presented. Seven were approved on the consent agenda, I'm sorry, seven were approved with conditions for certificate of appropriateness. One was a preliminary presentation and one was deferred. And then again, the next week, March 19th, I was not able to attend because of a conflict. But looking at the minutes, there were five projects approved on the consent agenda, five projects approved with conditions for certificate of appropriateness and one preliminary review. And looking through the minutes for both meetings, there was nothing really to bring forward to the Planning Commission of concern. The third meeting I attended was the Tree Commission on April 2nd. There, that meeting was mostly taken up with a discussion with several Neighborhood Development Services staff from site, and it was an explanation and running through the process for approving site plans relative to trees. Not only their review and comment, but also then during construction, their protection and preservation during construction. We had staff members from the Site Plan Review, from utilities, traffic, the Standards and Design Manual, and inspections, all there. The only other thing to note is that Arbor Day is coming up, April 26th. And it will be celebrated at Market Street Park at 10:00 a.m. There is a large basswood at the corner of East Market Street and First Street where the ceremony will be held. And this is a city ceremony in combination with the Charlottesville area Tree Stewards and with the Tree Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Selgates.
I attended a full committee meeting of the Housing Advisory Committee. We discussed the joint session. Probably the most substantive section was discussion about the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, funding and budget, which has been much discussed recently and is part of the budget. The, at that point, there was discussion about funding it at 1.5 million. Looks like it ended up being funded at 0.8 million, which is still helpful. The, a lot of discussion about funding that's already available to subsidize affordable housing that just hasn't gone out, managed by the CRHA, the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority. Lot of discussion about how to get that money out and helping people instead of just sitting in an account. Possibly needing a new institutional support or some nonprofit, possibly a new government entity to make that, make the money flow. The, there was discussion about the April 11th Impact Annual Assembly. And, oh, we got an update from UVA talking about a new 400-bed housing project, all students, that's going up for bid in the fall. Another first-year building and planning after that, which, overall, about 900 beds coming, which I'm excited to hear. Also, the Counselor Hill indicated that there would be no additional special use permits approved for student housing on West Main, which I haven't gotten clarity on yet. And that's what I know.
Could you repeat that?
Counselor Hill indicated no more special use permits for student housing would be approved for West Main.
Okay. Ms. Dowell.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening. I don't have anything to report today.
Mr. Heaton.
I also attended the Transportation Advisory Committee on the 20th, as well as the, I mean, excuse me, the Housing Advisory Committee, as well as the Transportation Advisory Committee on the same day. Lyle did a great job with the housing, it was a well-attended meeting. Transportation, they were, most interesting thing was a lot of discussion about rotaries. And I thought that was a, and I was, I was interested anyway. So, those two meetings attended, as well as I'm serving on the Unity Days Committees, which are meeting every other week. So, that's what I've been doing.
Great. Mr. Sulzenberg.
Well, I can report that the Who's are national champions. What committee was that? It was a big one at JPJ.
Go orange and blue.
Yeah, there's the right colors. There's a traitor in our midst, playing an Auburn flag on Saturday.
War Eagle.
I attended an MPO Tech meeting where we discussed the potential fate of the $18 million left over from some of the 29 solutions funds. So, there's been some talk about this with the Hydraulic Small Area Plan Committee, where they would like to see it used for the Zan Road Overpass, which will be a pedestrian, bike, and vehicle link across 29 at Zan Road connecting Stonefield and the Sentinel Square Shopping Center. That'll cost about 25 million, so there's about 7 million left over, left after that extra 18. That would have to be split by the city and the county. And then the city would prefer that we instead spend the funds on a left-turn lane off of 250 onto Hydraulic. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
Nothing to report.
No university report, except for the basketball.
I missed, I missed the meeting, so, I don't know, Jody?
Our university rep is in here.
The Fontaine, did you make that?
Yes, I attended.
Okay.
I think.
It was a good meeting.
Get back to me.
I think we should report that he did a fine job chairing the last commission meeting.
Yes, well, thank you.
Greatly appreciate you stepping in. Sorry, a little under the weather, but I think y'all, I heard you did a fine job, so thank you. Since then, I've attended, since the last time I was here, I've attended two TJPDC meetings and a couple other meetings. But the TJPDC meeting at this point is, we had several discussions on upcoming budget for the year, and also the personnel evaluations and performance reviews for the Executive Director. And looking at, they have gotten a couple of, they're doing some restructuring on the planning and the transportation planners there, as well as they have some vacancies there. So, if you know anybody looking for a regional planning job, I feel like they've got a couple open that they may be looking to fill. We also looked at the FY '20 Rural Transportation Plan, and a lot of this deals with the rural areas, Louisa Flavanna, Green, Nelson. So, sometimes there are a little bit different priorities than what we have. The one thing that exciting did come out of the meeting last week was that the Regional Housing Study has been released. I have, it's a pretty thick document, I haven't gotten all the way through it, but it'll be part of the discussion in the first Thursday in May meeting at the TJPDC. So, I'm looking forward to having those conversations. It was done and by some of the same people that did our, the Charlottesville Regional Housing Study, so that, and some of our data was used in there. So, that is what I had. Other committees that I was, I was afforded the opportunity to be on the, hiring, one of the interview committees for the new city manager. And so, I guess maybe not, it was not the biggest news yesterday since the Who's did win the national championship, but we do have a new city manager that has been hired and has accepted, and will begin May 13th. And so, that's, that is exciting news. And I think maybe more to come on that. And then we are still waiting for some more information regarding the RFP for the Housing Needs Assessment and the remainder of the long, of the Land Use Plan. And some of that information has come from me, so hopefully we're going to get some of that very soon. And I haven't heard lately, but we've had several discussions about the new position that's hired as a long-range planner. Still haven't heard on that. So, I'm waiting to hear when that's going to close and maybe what will happen with that. So, stay tuned. Don't worry, we'll be back with the Land Use Plan very soon. So, that is all I think I had. Missy, do you have? Bill, would you like to do the university report? We've covered the Who's basketball.
That's all I got. I can report that they are back in town and they're going to thrive safely, so.
Fantastic.
All right. I can't stop that in any way, but that's okay. So, our April work session, we thought would be on Standards and Design Manual, but as they were working with the consultants and looking back through the scheduling for that, there is to be a community discussion prior to a meeting with council and the commission and other groups. So, they will not be ready for April, but they're looking for different dates to do that in the future. So, we'll see, the May session may be prime for that, but as of right now, there is not an item on the April work session, and so that's just, you know, a placeholder at this point in time. We talked a little earlier about a co, or a bylaw allowance that allows for the commission if they so chose to move the regular meeting, if it falls on an election day, and brought the attention of the June 11th primary. And the commission will need to provide some guidance on that so that any logistics for the meeting for June can take place. Otherwise, we're still in hiring process for some of our open positions, and so we will hopefully be filling some of those soon so that we can, so I can do fewer jobs. So, but that's about it.
Does this, the discussion on the June, the June commission date, will that, you want to move that to the end of the agenda?
It's totally up to you all.
Well, let's get through the other part, and we may take that up before, if we're waiting on council to get here for the public hearing. Now.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, but I, Hosea reminded me about Fontaine Avenue, and there is something I would like to announce, that for the Fontaine Avenue Streetscape Improvements Project, there's going to be an open house for the public where preliminary plans and concepts are going to be presented, and that's going to occur Thursday, April 18th, at the Charlottesville Fire Department, the fire station there on Fontaine Avenue, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock. So, please, anyone who's interested in that section of Fontaine Avenue between JPA and the bypass, please come to that meeting and let your opinion be known. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, I want to go back to one other thing. Are you saying that once we look at the Design Standards Manual, that that will be a joint work session between council and commission?
That is my understanding. So, they, as they were regrouping with the consultants about next steps, they went back to the procedure that was outlined by council, and they requested meetings on a community-wide basis first, and then a meeting with the commission and council jointly. So, they're working towards setting that up.
Okay. But you think that'll be on the Tuesday work session date?
Well, I know at this point, it's not going to be on April 23rd. That is about all we know at this point. If it's going to be something that's not your regular work session date, then we'll float dates prior to making any sort of determinations there.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything else? At this time, on the agenda, it's matters to be presented by the public, not on the formal agenda. We have one public hearing this evening, the Bellevue Subdivision Utility Facility. I'm going to assume the most of you are here for that. So, for this portion of the meeting, stick tight. You'll have your opportunity to speak on that when we get to the public hearing section for the meeting. But right now, if you'd like to come forward, if you have something on your mind, not on the agenda, not related to the Bellevue Subdivision Utility Facility, you can come forward. You have three minutes, and it's your time to speak. So, I'll open the public hearing, or the.
Matters from the public.
Is there anyone that would like to speak? If not, then I will close matters by the public, and we will move to the consent agenda. We have two items of the consent agenda, minutes from March 12th and from March 5th. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, I would.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
A second? All in favor for the approval of consent agenda, please do so by voice acclamation?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Please note that the consent agenda has been approved unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the joint meeting of the commission slash council. Seeing that we have no council, if we could take the next five, seven minutes.
Why don't we take a moment to vote on the June meeting?
That's what I was about to bring up. That's okay. We have the, huh?
Getting all kind of help, aren't you?
We are getting all kind of help. And I think, I have had some amnesia, no, I'm just kidding. But if we could have a discussion, so, for the public, the discussion that we're having is in our bylaws, that we do have a section in there that if our meeting falls on a, an election day, that we can vote to move that meeting to the next available date. We did have some conversation in our pre-meeting about keeping that as is or moving it, and if anyone would like to have some conversation about that now, we can do so. Or, the consensus that I think I heard is that we keep it as is since this is a primary and not a major election in November. Is that correct?
I would move that we keep the date as assigned.
For June 11th?
June 11th.
So, I have a motion to keep the date as assigned for June 11th. We have a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Have a motion and a second? Do you need a roll call or a voice acclamation?
Voices, fine.
So, if we could vote on that by voice acclamation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Please note that that motion carries unanimously. We did have a caveat that we'd keep that as a light agenda. I had to put that on record, sorry. So, we still have five minutes. Mr. Sulzenberg, you said you had a very quick item.
Very quick, yeah. Do you think we can get the projector?
Nope, that's not quick.
It's one GIF. Yeah.
We don't even have our monitors.
Yeah, I'll check and see what's going on with that.
No man behind the curtain.
I don't think there's anybody back there.
So, we're not live feed? That's unfortunate.
Everybody turn around and wave.
You guys are lucky, there's going to be a whole data analysis and report here, but then, and then we won on Saturday.
You said quick.
Yeah, I never got to make any of it.
Oh.
All right. So, this, you might recognize, is Fry Spring. I have, it's particularly close to my heart, because this is the neighborhood that I used to live in. I used to live right over here on Mosley Drive from about 2013, 2015. All you can see is that in 2013 in Fry Spring, we have about five big parcels of vacant land that are platted out as streets and ready to develop. And you can see that these are starting to fill in. And now, I've colored each of these parcels to reflect the assessment of the value of their house. The lightest yellow is 150,000, and the darkest red is 450,000. And we can see that between when I lived there in 2013 and now, three of these have started to fill in and will be almost completely filled in, I think, by the end of the year. And every single one of these new houses that are coming in are significantly larger and more expensive than the existing houses. And one thing we can see here is that many, if you go with the zoning map, this is not the zoning map. This is the zoning map. All right. So, we can see that many of the places, and many of the parcels here in Fry Spring that were built a long time ago, were downzoned in the 1991 downzoning, including my old home, a duplex here on 502 Mosley. So, the legal requirements that we have put into place on these vacant lots and on non-conforming buildings are causing this growth in new housing to all be extremely high-end and changing the character, both in build form and in income level, of this neighborhood. So, I think that we, as the Planning Commission, seeing that there are about two or three big vacant parcels left in Fry Spring, all of which have been transacted in the last two years, that are getting ready to be built, and we're going to permanently put in place some future for this neighborhood, I believe that we should do what we can to see that those new developments fit the existing. those new developments fit the existing value and build form of the neighborhood. Therefore, I move to initiate a zoning text amendment to upzone, or to re-designate 34 non-conforming parcels and 33 vacant parcels in Fry Spring from R1 to R2.
Point of order.
Which point of order would you like to go with first?
There's got to be a procedure that we need to follow to do this.
There's a definite procedure that we need to follow. Maybe this, the best thing for us to do when you have this is come for a work session so we have this conversation, so that we can then talk to legal about how we initiate a resolution of intent.
How would this be different than the rezoning request that was put forward for Fry Springs, what was about two years ago?
That was to rezone things from R2 to R1. So it's different parcels entirely. So those were mostly affecting these along Crestmont and Cleveland and Chippeling, I believe. And so the ones I have in question are these non-conforming duplexes over here along Cleveland, these non-conforming duplexes, including the one I used to live in on Mosley, and then vacant parcels over here on the Paper Keen Street on Flint on Bellevue, the lot in question later tonight. And as we'll see later, denser development there would make such a pump station more viable and less likely to fail and cause negative impacts on the neighborhood.
So Madam Chair, intriguing idea, but I think something like this does require one work session. It also requires public input.
That's right.
So my understanding of the process is that I move to initiate it, and then staff gets 100 days to kind of come back with a report, and that's when we actually look at it and have it on the public hearing schedule and all that.
Not quite.
Can we have some legal...
So Roy is correct. He may make a motion to initiate a zoning text amendment and request staff to study it. There is the, there would not be a time clock on it. That only applies if city council refers something to the planning commission. And then the study process would also require a review of land use patterns and that sort of thing. And while I can't tell you what the schedule is, I know that there is an upcoming RFP that's about to be issued to have a consultant assist the city with updating the comprehensive plan. So you might consider, certainly it's fun to look at it, you could develop some information to be given to the consultant, but you might also consider as part of studying it whether you have that looked at in a broader context of updating the entire land use plan as part of the comp plan update.
So his motion is in order?
He may initiate a text amendment, yes, for study.
Then I'll second his motion.
And now that the motion is on the floor, I'd like to note, I did consider waiting for the comprehensive look and full update of the zoning map, but at this point, you know, the RFP is out, we'll still have the comprehensive plan process. You know, as Alex said earlier this year, we're looking at about two years, three years until that happens. And as we can see, and I would have had a graphic for this, but all of those vacant parcels have been transacted recently and are likely to be built on before that process ends. If we don't want to lock Fry Spring into this future forever where it drastically changes, we need to take action now.
Sometimes what you have done after the initiation of an amendment of this nature, which is to correct a situation that people are worried about, is you, after it's initiated, you have said, "Let's talk about this in a work session and see what information there is." But you are also correct that before it could be considered officially by the commission, it would have to be typed up, framed up, staff report, public hearing, all that sort of thing. So there's a lot of process that has to go through.
Right. What is the process right now with a motion and a second we vote?
Correct.
So if we vote not to do this, this is crash and burn? Because what I'd rather, I'd like not to see it crash and burn. I'd like to take our time and think about it. So my recommendation is that you withdraw the motion, and let's set up a work session to get the ball rolling.
Well, I guess my...
Because I don't want it to crash and burn.
This is just to initiate the process of studying it. So if we pass this motion now, then we have time to consider it. It'll be on the floor later.
I guess I'm confused about what your motion was.
It's just to initiate.
What I heard is...
Which code sections are we initiating?
Yes.
Potentially. It would, it's, as I understand the motion, it's a request to reclassify zoning parcels within this Fry Springs area from R1 up to R2. And which, Mr. Sulzenberg has given you a general description of the parcels he'd like to see included, but before you could go forward, you would have to, as part of that study process, determine exactly which parcels that change in classification would apply to.
If I may amend my motion to be less specific about these specific parcels, and instead widen it to initiate a zoning text amendment and study it in order to re-designate parcels so that the future development of Fry Spring is more in conformance with the existing patterns there. That will give maybe some staff some leeway to adjust it as needed.
And is that approved by the second?
One more time?
To take out the bit about 34 non-conforming parcels and 33 vacant parcels, and just examine parcels in Fry Spring to bring non-conforming ones into conformance with the zoning code, and to examine vacant parcels to make future development there more in conformance with the existing land use patterns of Fry Spring.
I'd second that.
Are we in discussion?
After second, you can discuss.
We're in a discussion about something that we've been blindsided over, so I'm a little bit, we've got council here now.
You've got them just to initiate the discussion, not to have it on now.
If I might suggest that you consider, Madam Chair, postponing the discussion until after your agenda items?
I think that's a great idea.
We can make that motion.
Does that need to be in the form of a motion?
I think that, since this was not on the formal agenda...
On our agenda at all, right.
I think typically you add new things at the end if you are to take them up.
Can I just move to table my motion?
Until the end of the meeting?
Until the end of the meeting.
I think the chair can just do that.
I think, based off of, again, information where this was going to be quick, we had five minutes, and it's not quick, we'll move this to the end of the agenda after our agenda items. So if you would like to join us back as a commissioner at this point...
This. We're going to learn...
We're going to table that to the end of the agenda.
With Lori, I can tell.
We do have a quorum of council. If I could have either the mayor or vice mayor gavel in.
I'll come to the floor.
Thank you so much. The first item on the agenda, or the item on the agenda for this evening that has actually been advertised, is SP 18-0009 Bellevue subdivision utility facility sanitary pump station. Landowners Core Azalea LLC and Azalea cottages LLC are requesting a special use permit, SUP, pursuant to City Code Section 34-420, to allow construction of a utility facility sanitary sewer pump station to serve the following properties. Tax map and parcel 20-121, 20-125, 20-126, 20-129, 20-142, 20-144, 20-145, 20-147, and 20-148 collectively to be considered the subject property. The subject properties are zoned R-1S residential small lot and have frontage on Bellevue Street, currently an unimproved platted street as well as an unimproved alley, and are directly accessible by a stubout on Azalea Drive. The subject property includes approximately 6.8 acres, and landowners propose to construct up to 49 single-family dwelling units within the subject property, density of approximately 7.20 dwelling units per acre. The topography of the site does not allow for standard gravity-fed sewer service. The comprehensive planned land use map for this area calls for low-density residential, 15 dwelling units or less. Mr. Alphley.
Madam Chair, Planning Commission, Matt Alphley, a city planner, Neighborhood Development Services. As the chair stated tonight, you're going to hold a public hearing on a public, on a sanitary pump station for the subject property. This started about a year ago. This planning commission, one, held a meeting on a proposed subdivision to answer outstanding questions. Again, the commission had a preliminary discussion on December 11th regarding the sanitary pump station. The applicant is requesting this as to tie into, a gravity-fed system would require going further south to tie into the Azalea system. They are proposing a sanitary pump station with an easement to the west to collect the sanitation, the sanitary sewer from the proposed byright neighborhood, and pump it up into the city's gravity-fed system. And again, I have, we have, utilities department is here tonight because there's going to be kind of, I believe, a lot of technical questions, maybe the commission has. I'm here to answer land use questions prior to the public hearing and after the public hearing, as you're in your discussion, we're available to answer questions.
Questions? There's been a lot of discussion about HOAs. It looks like we're talking about a 20-year bet on an HOA. How common is it for HOA to survive 20 years in the city? Is that a reasonable bet? Homeowners Association.
I don't think staff wants to speculate on how long they exist. We do, the city has HOAs. They're tied to a lot of different type of projects. PUDs is probably the one you're most common, probably familiar with, where an HOA is formed to maintain not only stormwater systems, but maybe just to maintain open spaces, different things. So don't want to speculate on how long they last, but they are a common practice.
For a HOA of about 40 some homes, is that more or less likely to succeed, given the city's track record?
So in a city our size, we are fairly small. Our HOAs typically are smaller. You do see typically larger HOAs that tend to do better as far as, you know, you're talking about 200 homes. So they're able to have a board that's constantly turning over, you're not getting burnout. Smaller HOAs do tend to have more of a problem. I would say more in the 25, when you have HOAs about 25 or less, that becomes kind of a problem. This is kind of in the mid-range setup.
Thank you. Can you help me understand what happens when one of these units fails? So the toilet doesn't flush, is that fair to say?
In some of this, I am going to refer to utilities, but from there's, because there's, this is a complicated issue, there's several different things going on layer-wise. We're talking about land use, but there is a very important technical component in the utility side. I'm not going to speak to that end. If utilities can speak to that, from a land use side, you have a violation of your SUP. And there is a system for that that goes through zoning. There is, I know this is going to sound, it would follow any pattern as far as any zoning violation if you are not following what was approved in the SUP. Now again, that's just the land use side. I know there's a more practical side that y'all maybe want to talk about as y'all get into more of the detail of a system like this.
Just finally, reading through the packet, I see some suggestions for how to kind of manage the risk here, which I was very concerned about, so I'm pleased that there is, clearly there's been hard work done here.
We'll get into discussion in a minute, I think we might want to have that, but are there any more questions for staff? And when do you want to bring up utilities? During questions, or do you guys have a presentation?
Yeah, I think they're...
Just here?
I want to talk a little bit more about the HOA, and I'll defer to...
Well, why don't we, this is questions.
Yeah, that's why I want to ask any questions.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I'll let Jody go first, because he asked the question, but I was going to, I don't want to steal his question.
I'm trying to figure out if it qualifies for land use. But I believe, please verify, Matt, the pump station, the lift station, is on a private property?
Yes, so...
It's on one of the lots that is being offered for sale in this development?
Correct. So the way our code is written, you have the use matrix, 34-420. And this ties into subdivision too. Basically, you have to have a lot that has a habitable use on it. This can kind of go down a rabbit hole, and I'll lean on the attorney's office, because this was a conversation back and forth, but you cannot have a, you cannot create a lot unless it's going to be created for habitation. So you can't create a lot just for a pump station. So that's why you have this lot that has a house on it, and the pump station is ancillary.
So the development could not set aside land for the pump station and even the stormwater retention devices because, when it serves the entire development, that's still not possible to set aside a piece of property in service of the development, and would be owned by the HOA, I presume, for the utilities for that HOA?
Only a PUD can do that. You can't do that in a byright subdivision, how the code is written.
Okay.
But you can't have an easement that's dedicated to the HOA.
So that's not the developer's choice, that's the city's...
That's the code.
Thank you.
So the closest organization in HOA, like group, that I'm aware of that does anything like this is the Lake, Lake Bonachella. And that's actually outsourced to, but it's still within that. Do we know of any other, any other HOAs in Virginia that are smaller than Lake Bonachella that do something like this?
When staff looked into it, we couldn't find anything this, at this scale. Everything was either really large, run by the local utility company. Some of the private ones were more actually commercial oriented for like strip malls.
You had some questions missed out pre-meeting?
And I'm not sure if this is for you or for the applicant, but my big concern is if this SUP isn't approved, how would this site, how would you develop on this site?
And that's going to get kind of technical, and I'm going to, the applicant might want to speak to that too, as far as what they would do if you didn't get, if they did not get the SUP. There are other options that utility can speak to. I don't know if this, Madam Chair, if you want to get into that depth, or if you want to wait till after the public hearing.
Probably, that's probably, I mean, I think that, this, try to keep this to questions now so that we can get through the public hearing, because I think there's going to be a lot more questions raised once. And then I guess we can have a point of order of how you guys want to handle it, especially since it seems to be complicated. So we can do the questions from staff right now. We can hear the presentation by the developer owner, and then we can, if you've got more, hear the public. If you've got more questions at that point, typically we go into conversation or discussion at that point, but it may be something, because of the complexity of this, we may want to have some more questions. Do I see only one head nod? Yes, no, maybe?
Yep.
Okay. So we're, we have no, right now, no further questions for staff?
For land use.
For land use, again... For land use, again, yes. And remember, in the pre-meeting, we had a conversation about our purview, the planning commission's purview.
I guess there is one question. The creek that runs through that, where does that creek empty into, does it empty into Morse, there's a little, little stream, there's a little stream there on the base of that.
The, yes, the water that runs down there goes through Azalea Park into Morse Creek. I'm going to...
To Morse Creek, yeah, okay. And relative to Morse Creek, where will the pumping station be? So, I could think...
Can you point to the map?
I mean, it would be the lower left, so the southwest corner of the proposed development.
Yeah, how far away from the stream is, is the, is it like fifty yards, ten yards? Is the stream running right next to it?
So, I'm...
So, it's going to be right there, the pipe's right there. So, it's probably ten, fifteen yards from the, the stream.
I would say from that water, that collection of water, I'm very hesitant to call it, streams have very, how a body of water is defined sets very strict different things on it, and so I'm not going to speak to what that has been defined by the Corps of Engineer.
Or that body of water, so it looks like it's fifteen feet away from the body...
And that's going to be, the proposed development would pipe that.
Unless it failed.
And when...
That's a question. Unless it failed, question.
Well, that's stormwater, right?
No, there's, there is a, so it's, you know, it's a valley, and there's water collecting, and that water channel, again, I'm very wary of calling it something when it might not be that, but that, whatever that channel is, is going to be put underground.
In a stormwater, you know, a conveyance system for water, but that's not part of the pumping station?
Correct. No, it's not part of the pumping station.
Okay.
And, Matt, in the write-up for this application, it states, "The topography of the site does not allow for standard gravity-fed sewer systems." Wouldn't that be more accurate to say, "The topography of the site does not allow for standard gravity-fed sewer system within the property lines"?
I think that's a fair statement, because there are, to tie in, you would need to procure those easements to tie into the gravity fed.
So, it's not necessarily, topography of site doesn't allow it at all, it's just within the limits of the property lines?
Within the limits of the development.
Yes. Thank you.
And are these easements always done just through private transactions? I mean, sewer lines seem like the normal place to have eminent domain, right?
Not, not really.
Or never done?
So, we typically, we, and utilities can speak to this later, we don't, we don't put in a lot of, so the developer would put in new lines. If you build a new subdivision, you're putting in new line. City would come back and accept it. You built it to our standards, we accept it. I'm not aware of where the city has come in and said, "We're going to take an easement for a new line." Now, there have been cases where, especially through subdivisions, a linesman, we have, we have old lines, that easements were never dedicated. And this comes up a lot where that line is discovered during the subdivision process, and utilities will ask for ease, an easement over that existing line.
Gotcha. And then, so when the sewer system was originally, like, put in, were those lines all running through consenting property owners' parcels?
Oh, jeez.
It's maybe a Lyle question.
Well, the subdivision that was, that is currently there, the lots that were, didn't even take those things into account at that point in time.
The only thing there are the lots, a proposed alley and a proposed street.
There's a reason, you know, anything that's coming forward now for greenfield development, it's because there's a difficult situation. It wasn't easy, and now we're left with land where things are not easy. And so, as things get more complicated, that's where more applications such as this come forward. I mean, that, that area over there, multitudes of plotted lots, they've been plotted there for a very, very long time, but there are legitimate, you know, constraints for the actual development.
Please stand by. If the applicant would like to come forward, hang tight, we're, yes, we will, remember you have ten minutes for your presentation. Do you have something?
I do.
On the projector, so you'd like for us to move?
Well, yes, and as I said, this is largely for the benefit of those that are out behind me or who are watching, curious about this. We had a discussion about this a few months ago. This is actually kind of an unremarkable thing. It's weird that Charlottesville doesn't have more of them, because it's pretty hilly terrain here. I'll give you an example. At Wintergreen, on this, on the mountain side alone, which is obviously hilly in Charlottesville, but it's much smaller, there are twenty-six pump stations there of pretty similar size to this. So, it's maybe unusual for the city, but technically, this is not really a weird or complicated engineering feat whatsoever. So, a quick overview of this, I think probably all of you and certainly the neighbors, I think, would be familiar with what this site is. It's yellow there. Page down, page over. What, how does Roy do this thing? Ah, there we go. But this is a, part of the study we did, one of the things we do is we look at the capacity of the sewer system to make sure it has available capacity for our lots, for the pump station. The pump station there is in red, a little square at the downhillmost portion of the site, and a force main goes up over to Mona Vista Avenue, which ties into the gravity sewer. There's a site plan detail. In yellow are the sewer lines. Those would be privately maintained within the neighborhood. They drain by gravity down to the pump station, which I'll show you a picture of in a moment, and then are pumped up the hill, three hundred feet or so, to the existing sewer line, Mona Vista. It's a little blow, but you've got to get a sense of the, there's the lot, Lot One is the lot that has this sewer pump station on it. It also has a stormwater, and I draw this important point here, because you're talking about HOAs and what their responsibilities are and things like this, right? Well, that storm sewer system has to have, stormwater management has to have a fund to maintain that as well. That is probably a three to four hundred thousand dollar system that has to be maintained and potentially replaced if there was ever a problem with it. So, the HOA has to put aside money for that. Every HOA, that's why we have HOAs in the city now, even though it's not common, like, lots, like open space lots to own, there, everybody has these stormwater facilities to maintain. So, any neighborhood, whether you have five lots or a hundred, has an HOA and has a cost obligation to that. This pump station is probably a fifty thousand dollar item, so in the scale of the other obligations, the HOA, it's actually quite small. This is a typical schematic of what it looks like. The pump sits down in a wet well, manhole, basically. The sewer enters gravity flow, gets pumped up to the gravity flow. There's floats in the, in the wet wells, potentially a big manhole. As it fills up, a little float kicks on, says pump, pumps the sewer up the hill. When it drains out, it stops, and so it cycles on and off, depending on the load every few minutes throughout the day. Scale reference for you, just again, the point, and I'll make this, is this is really a pretty small thing. The pump that sits down in the well is about that size. There are two of them. There's, in case one has an issue, the other one kicks on, and someone goes and pulls it up and places it, so it's got a backup built in. All the pump stations are that way. Here's what you're looking at, is the pump station. So, if you're walking past it, that's what you see. It's a manhole, just like a sewer manhole, a little larger. It's got an access port on it, stays locked, and then a control panel. These are kind of more commercial-type settings. We would do a control panel in a little building, probably like that one on the far right, the little blue shed. So, in that backyard, there'll be a fenced-in area, a little shed like that that has control panels in it, and that's basically all you would see or ever know about this pump station Questions that came up at our neighborhood meeting are about the smell, and that can be a problem on older systems that aren't equipped with the correct technology of the day, and you can do an air pump and a diffuser to avoid that. Just, it's cycling frequently enough avoids that. You would not smell this pump station. There's also option for filters and other things that can take care of any potential odors from the vent pipe. Again, that's really not something that we would expect to be an issue. Noise is a diagram of it, just to give you an idea. The pumps sit down in water. They're electric pumps. They, so you would, maybe if you stand right on top of it, you might hear the pumps running, but that's basically it. If you were in the house, in the yard around it, you would never know it existed. There is a backup generator that would be a natural gas generator. It would be sort of like one of those house ones that would be part of the system, so if the power ever goes down, the generator kicks on off the natural gas, powers the pump station until the power comes back on. And that's the details of this thing. Again, it's a very small system. It, once it's built, I don't expect anyone will ever know it's there. There are a variety of safeguards built in, as far as redundancy of pumps, the backup power, the HOA will have a property manager, and one of the requirements, I think, in the conditions of staff laid out, was a yearly inspection report. That's typical of what, if the city owned this, they would do inspection and file a report on any locality would. So, the conditions are basically making sure it operates as a municipal system would. And that, so that would be your turn in the utility department to verify maintenance, and otherwise, it just gets built, it operates, and it's part of an infrastructure, it's very common, just happens to require a special use permit in the city, and that's why we're here. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. You have a technical land use or otherwise, and the city utility engineers here as well, so.
Questions for the applicant?
My question was, and I had already asked it earlier, and I don't know if this is something you can answer or the city experts, but if this SGP is not approved, how else would you develop this site?
You'd have to either acquire easements to go to sewer downstream, which is a possibility, or this might require a different kind of permit. You could, in theory, build a wastewater plant on the property and actually treat the wastewater there and discharge it. That would be lawful in the state code, and maybe a different kind of permit, maybe a special use permit for that as well, but that would be the other, the other option.
And then, have you discussed with the neighbors the possibility of getting the easement to tie into the city's water system?
The, the owner sent out letters to all of the, I think it's eleven or twelve downstream properties, and no one took them up on that offer, only got one or two responses back. So, there was letters sent out, but no response, and we didn't expect people to be keen on that, because this would be, you know, going a path behind their houses to build a sewer line, so.
Have you considered raising the price, offering more?
Well, I, I don't, I don't make that decision, I guess, but there's a, there's a cost to build the sewer, you know, down there as well, right? So, if you have to build that distance, is a cost to development. And another thing, I guess I'd point out, these pump stations understand that, you know, gravity sewers can also have failures and, you know, sewage out. In fact, this is, the city has improved this greatly, but when I first started fifteen years ago, I stumbled across a sewer on St. Clair that had a hatch in it, that when the sewer got filled, it opened up, and the sewer went out into Meadow Creek, and you could see a trail going down. So, in many ways, I think the pump station has a lot of safeguards in it for this type of, for that situation. It's like a gravity sewer doesn't. And again, the city does a very good job maintaining these things, more so now, I think. But if the gravity sewer gets clogged up, somehow, somebody opens a manhole and drops a ball down, or whatever, something gets stuck in there, that sewer will actually back up and can pop out the manhole now, because there's no warning for that sort of thing, whereas this has all sorts of safety catches on it to say, "Hey, we're not pumping." A light goes off, it alerts people, so there's a lot of safeguards built into this kind of system that, you know, I think just, you think about comparing to gravity, need to be taken into account. It's not, I don't think necessarily a worse system.
I don't think we're thinking it's a worse system, I just think we know that the other system the city's going to maintain versus this one.
Yeah, the maintenance, right, making sure this is maintained right is really the key component of this.
And then I just had one other question, sorry. In the packet, I noticed that we had, or I can't remember if it was staff, or if that was something that you guys came up with, but what is your take on having to report to the city annually of the maintenance of the sub pump?
That's fine. That we, we would, our HOA will hire a professional operator, who will turn and report to them at least every year, probably more frequently. So, we would just turn a copy of that into the city as well, so that work would be done anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So, you mentioned other HOAs to maintain stormwater facilities, which you said are about eight times more expensive. That doesn't really tell us a lot unless we know how much more often, or how much less often those fail. How often do those HOAs have to lay out money to repair their stormwater facilities compared to these pump stations, which we've heard about twenty years for this?
Well, the, the cost cycling is twenty years. So, it's, the HOA puts enough money every month into a fund, and in twenty years, it can pay for the whole cost of replacement. The lifespan of this should be way longer than that. We've used the Wintergreen example, almost all those pumps on the mountain are original from forty years ago. So, like, what should happen is, they should end up, by the time they need to do something, they should have twice as much money as they need. So, the life cycle is just a, you take maybe the expected life cycle and cut it in half, so you're more conservative on how much money you put aside. And I, we haven't had these stormwater facilities in the ground a long time. I tend to think we're going to have a lot more problems with those in the next twenty years than we will with the pump stations.
Any other questions?
Question about how the twenty-five-hundred figure, so letters went out to nearby residents saying, "Hey, can we have a, some space to run sewer line under your property, twenty-five-hundred dollars to do that?" Is that a standard number? How does that number get generated? No, it varies. That's, that's pretty typical. We usually would offer a few thousand dollars for an easement. Keep in mind that, what, ten of those, so the, the cost of the easements alone would be about the cost of the pump station, right? Let alone the cost of putting the sewer line in itself.
Sorry, didn't you say it was fifty thousand for the pump station?
Oh, sorry, I'm off.
It would be about twenty-five thousand for those?
But the sewer line, the actual construction of the sewer line would be way more expensive.
But it would be maintained by the city?
It would, yeah, it would be the city's responsibility to do so, yes.
And this whole special use permit process costs you something, right?
Oh, yeah.
You said that pump station cycles frequently during the day?
Mm-hmm.
About how many times?
Let me just, I don't know if I have that in this PER. I want to say it's every, like, twenty, thirty minutes, but I might have to look at this, and I can answer that after the other comments, if you're still, if you're curious about the exact figure. It depends on...
Several times a day?
Yes, multiple times a day, it does, yes.
And so, all of the things, vents, or the fans, or whatever, that control the potential for smell, is electric?
Yes.
So, potential for failure?
Well, yeah, if the power goes out, the generator kicks on, but a fan could break.
And so, but, but just the pump station by itself, if you're saying that that has virtually no noise?
Right.
Will the generator be inside the little building as well?
It could be, yes.
Do you know what the decibel level is for the noise on a generator?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay. And how many of these have you designed and built?
I've actually only designed one personally. I didn't design, this is being designed by a Hurt and Profit at Lynchburg.
How many have you put in for some of your developments?
A half dozen, something like that.
Where are they?
There's the one, there's a couple in Louisa. We did one, a small one in Fluvana somewhere. They're typically more like the little commercial, like it's a little office building kind of thing.
So, it's not residential?
The one in Louisa was residential.
Right, so not residential?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, office use, so I'm there during the day, I'm not there at night when it's time for bed or things like that. So, it's day use. So, you're, you're putting this on a property that's used during... So you're, you're putting this on a property that's used during eight to five business hours?
Some of them, some of them.
Where have you put one that's not, that's residential use?
There's one in Louisa in Zion's Crossroads, apartment complex there.
Apartment complex?
It's 200, no, it was 150 units.
How, when was that put in?
Three years ago roughly, four years.
Any other questions?
So, give me a sense of what the failure mode looks like. So you have single redundancy on your pumps. Is it both pumps die, just kick it for the last time, and they need to both be replaced? The whole system needs to be replaced?
The pumps can be replaced one at a time. So it's got, it has basically sensors in it that alert someone. It's got an auto dialer on it, right? So if something goes wrong, it calls the technician automatically. So if one pump goes, someone will be alerted and they would go and basically change it out. They would inspect these things, you know, frequently too. So you would typically not have situation where both pumps fail. If somehow that happened, it's, and it would kick on a warning light, it would call somebody. And you have a couple options at that point. One is you can, you know, cut the water off the neighborhood, then people can't flush a toilet, the sewer stops running. But more likely, you would just bring a pump truck in and, you know, every day or so, you just pump the wet well out, and that would, until the, till the things are fixed. So basically, your, your downtime would be however long it takes you to get a pump truck over to the site, and you would pump it out, and then that would be, you know, fixed in that time before it fills up again.
So it'd basically be a, a septic tank that's open to the air until it's fixed?
Not open, it'd be just got, it's got a hatch on. So basically, you, you need to go pump it out, you open the hatch, take the hose down, pump the sewer out, close it up.
And then what would be the turnaround on replacing the pumps?
Well, I guess I would have to say it depends on the water authorities, like for example, like in Elson, where they keep them in stock, right? So they have a couple, and I'm sure whoever operates this would be the same way. You would essentially have a, some kind of licensed utility operator has this. And they would probably be maintaining multiple pumps around the area, and so they would have the sort of.
What other pumps are there?
Oh, lots of them in Almarle County.
Gotcha.
Any in the city?
The city? The only one I know, it doesn't, doesn't work anymore. It used to be one over in the Woolen Mills neighborhood, it's a self-storage place over there. There is an old pump there, there was, there was a gravity sewer put in, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago. They took that offline, but there actually was one there.
Why'd they take it offline?
Actually, I think because the, those lots across the street were being developed. It was, there was a PUD, so this came up on Twitter not that long ago, on, on the Franklin side. And I think, because they built this, those developers built the sewer line without even building houses over there, never did, and they finally sold the lots and a couple houses just got built recently.
You said something like this was at Lake Monachello?
Lake Monachello has a bunch of, a bunch of pumps.
Right.
That's, and actually Aqua Virginia prefers the pumps over the gravity, because they don't have as much problem with the inflow from runoff. So when we do new, new work over in Lake Monachello, they actually want individual pumps for houses, because you avoid that. But yeah, Lake Monachello has them, Wintergreen has them, Almarle has a number of them that are municipal. I'm sure there's lots of individual ones too. There's this one on, we worked on years ago on Burkmar Drive near the SPCA, there was one there, and so, probably similar size to this. I didn't do the design for that, we did the site plan for a piece.
So there is a, there's a house in Lake Monachello that's got one of the grinded pumps in the backyard. And just about every six weeks, something goes wrong with it and it alarms, and the alarm's really loud. Do you have an audible alarm on one of these?
There is an audible alarm, yeah. These are, this is much more industrial grade, it's not like the small one in someone's house, right? It's a, it's a little thing. Yeah, it does have an audible alarm, that if it's not working, it will go off and the neighbors will be alerted.
And how do they get that alarm to go off, I mean, to, to stop?
I suppose they have to call the, they have to call the utility technicians, they will, they will come out, and they have a key to get it and turn it off, basically.
So at 2:00 in the morning, that could go off, and we have to wait on a technician before the rest of the neighborhood could sleep?
Yeah, and they're on, they're 24/7 on call.
They couldn't shut it off remotely?
It's a siren? Probably so.
It's a siren?
It's, it's, trust me, I know.
The Lake Monachello, for those of you who've been here for a while and not just a couple of years, didn't they have some failures with those where thousands of gallons of sewers went into Lake Monachello?
I, I do not know. I know they've had, they had trouble because their, structurally, their setup was not good from the beginning. They had a non-properly maintained sort of setup that caused them problems. But as far as I know, since Aqua Virginia took that over, they have not had any problems. But I, if it goes back beyond five or 10 years, I'm not familiar.
Like 2002, 11, 16?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Are any more questions for the applicant? We can open up the hearing, public hearing?
Yes, I have a couple.
Okay, sorry.
So Mr. Schiff, you mentioned that there'd be a professional firm maintaining the lift station. How do we know that?
I think it's in the conditions that the staff, but for one, it's, it's a, it's like a state, a law that that has to be done. And then I think the zoning, let's see, let's see, that got put as a condition. Just has the inspection. Yeah, I suppose that could very well, and it should very well be, you know, clarified in the conditions. That could be one.
And, and that would be the HOA's responsibility, and who'd be checking the HOA to see that they indeed do have a professional service?
That would be the city utilities folks, when this, when this report is turned in every year. It would need to be turned in by somebody authorized to, to write it, basically, which would be a professional engineer or a licensed utility operator.
And what is the annual maintenance for this kind of thing? And then what other kind of maintenance cycles are there? Five-year, 10-year, 15? Are there other things that need to be maintained over a period of time?
Well, the pumps are pretty frequently maintained, and it, you know, it's like typical mechanical maintenance, right? You've got fittings to be greased and the sort of thing. The, the pumps themselves have kind of a grinder of sorts in it that it's effectively replaced, like the pump is pulled off and that piece is replaced periodically. So it's basically part of the inspection, you look at it and sees if it needs to be replaced, you replace that piece in one pump, and then that pump goes back down, and you would sometime later replace the second pump, that particular, it's like a, the turbine or the impeller, basically, that is part of the pump.
Okay, and that's annually?
As required, it might depend, you know, it prob, not necessarily annually, it's inspected all the time, probably every couple of years.
Okay. And then the generator, doesn't that have to be turned on periodically and checked to make sure it's operating?
Yeah, you probably would, you know, monthly basis, cycle that on for 10 or 15 minutes, make sure everything is running with it, so it's ready to perform. Those are also industrial grade, they're used to sitting for long periods of time, and they're, they're made for that.
And anything else about the pump operation that requires maintenance? I guess the, the horns, the, the signalization, the controls, all need to be checked periodically?
Well, you basically would know if any of that wasn't, you know, what worked, because they, they get, guys that go by to inspect it will be to look at the status of things, right? It's got little lights that tell you if everything's working. But then also, I think you would know, like, the auto dialer type thing would, if it wasn't working, for example, you would, you would know that. So yeah, it's not, this, the electric, the electrical panel wouldn't really have any maintenance to it. It's in a building, so it's out of the weather. See, the generator too, could be in a building out of the weather. So it's not, check the pump, the mechanical part of the pump itself is what you would check, it would require the most maintenance.
And is a lift station in this kind of, kind of topography in a low area more prone to odor issues than along a, or at the top of a hill?
Well, whatever odor, if it had any, might, you know, be, smell might be experienced different those around it based on the topography, right? From the low area versus like up on top of a ridge. But again, we really expect it, if it's, if it's functioning like it should, like it does, there really isn't any odor to spread about.
What if you find out it does after you install it? Are there other things you can do?
There'd be more mitigation, like, you know, so that, that would only happen if somehow the, the aerator that was supposed to work for it wasn't performing, right? Somebody spec'd the wrong size. That'd have to be replaced. But like if the, it's not, this is not new or advanced technology, right? So people know how to do these where they work, it's just a matter of, if something was installed incorrectly, that could be a short-term issue, but there's a fix for it, basically.
Thank you. And so, you showed us dual redundancy on the pumps. Why not go with triple redundancy to make it even less likely that none of them fail?
It's just not the standard.
Okay. And then is there redundancy on the air pumps that diffuse air and go anaerobic?
I don't know that off the top of my head, actually. I don't, I don't think so. It probably could be done, wouldn't be difficult to do.
All got.
I'm going to ask one quick last question, and we're going to move on, but please stay tuned, because after all this, we still may have more questions. With the, last year's rainfall, I do know that they had some problems with the rainfall in Lake Monachello with these pumps. But with the recent rainfall, how would that affect the overflow or anything like that? With the, with the.
For other systems?
With the water being as, I mean, with the ground being as saturated as it has been over the past year? Is it going to have any effect on this?
No, the only way, so what happens, like at, like Monachello, one of their problems are that ups, not the pump station, but upstream in gravity sewer, there's a manhole and a ditch and like that, right? Water goes into the manhole and causes the pump to overflow, because it's overwhelmed its capacity. But no, as far as, like, the, the system is sealed tight, the manhole is. So it's not like groundwater doesn't have any effect on the pump itself. Water getting into the system does. That's part of the study we did, if you read it, you know, it was 30 some odd days of, of testing, where we looked at the capacity of the interceptor sewer line down by Morris Creek we eventually tie into. And some of that does peak as rainfall occurs, because in your system, you still do have some infiltration. So it does affect like the main sewer line, doesn't really affect the pump station.
Thank you. All right.
At least Kathy wants to jump in.
Okay.
Thank you. Is this pump station in a floodplain? And second, if you were to deed this to the city, would the city accept it? Why or why not?
Well, to answer the first one, no, it's not in a floodplain. And the second one, that would be the city's call effective that, there's no, in the HOA structure, there's no intention to ever dedicate the sewer pump or the stormwater systems to local government. They would be permanently operated by the neighborhood.
But I've heard you say that some HOAs do do that, or some developments would deed it to this, to a city. And parks are often deeded to a city in a development. It's not impossible. If you were to deed this to the city, would the city accept this because it has to meet the city's standards?
Well, again, I can't, that would be, honestly, that would be, right, city council's call on accepting it. But as far as, does it meet the city's standards? We've turned in our preliminary design to the city utilities folks, as far as I know, it does. They can speak to that more, but our, the comment we received from them was, even though it's private, they won't let us build it without it meeting their standards. So we'd expect that. And again, if it were ever to be taken over, that would be a, a city decision.
Kathy, maybe we'll bring up utilities after the public hearing, and then maybe have some of those questions, because I had kind of a similar thought. Thank you. I know there's a lot of people here tonight, and, and potentially for this, I apologize at the beginning, we did have one item deferred. The Flint Hill PUD has been deferred by the applicant, and that may not be heard until May. So if you are here for that, I apologize, you've gotten to hear a lot of sewer talk, and you may not have wanted to. So, at this time. I'll handle it, thank you.
I'm helping.
Anyway, we have several people on the agenda to speak, and maybe some of you didn't get signed up, but we did have a sign-up sheet. I'd like to remind you that you have three minutes to speak. There's a little light system here, the green means go, the yellow means you have 30 seconds, and the red is please wrap it up. If you were in agreement with some, if you want to stand or whatever, if there's redundant comments, you can just say ditto if that's what you want to do. You need to come up and please state your name. Please speak into the microphone so we can get all of this recorded properly. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing, and we will start off with Jess Winger.
Hello, I am Jess Winger. Many residents of Fry Springs have significant concerns about the proposed special use permit for the Bellevue sanitary sewer pump station, which would be located in our neighborhood. I spoke before you in December at the Plank Commission's preliminary discussion of the special use permit about our initial concerns. At the time, I was speaking on behalf of an organized group of more than 30 concerned households. I am now the first of five speakers on, speaking on behalf of an organized group of 86 households, many of whom are represented behind you and whose letter you have received. We will now speak about some of our concerns in turn, and the topic I will cover, and the topics I will cover, are odor and the environment. The proposed pump station is sited next to an active stream channel, while it's not shown on a USGS topo map, as Matt has already hinted at. It is shown on the City of Charlottesville's GIS map and the City of Charlottesville's local waterways map. There is year-round flowing water there. This means that the underground pump station could be installed in saturated soils, which could lead to problems with groundwater infiltration and subsequent sanitary sewer overflows if the wet well is not sealed or installed properly. These sanitary sewer overflows would flow through neighboring backyards, through the Azalea Park wetlands, and eventually into Morris Creek, which is already impaired for bacteria. In addition, the proposed siting of this pump station is in a stream valley, which, as we touched on earlier, odors will linger. Odors can linger due to topography, because the proposed site is approximately 34 feet below the elevation of Monte Vista Avenue to the west and 24 feet lower than Azalea Drive to the east. Given the topography, the odors will be particularly pronounced during atmospheric conversions. Many municipalities require a study of predominant wind direction before a sanitary pump station can be installed. In this case, with the pump station being surrounded by houses on all sides, there's no question that residents will be impacted by odors, it's just a matter of which residents will be the unlucky ones. There are many engineering solutions for odors from sanitary pump stations, as the engineer has touched on, and on surface, these sound like a great option. These engineering solutions range from carbon filters, which have been proven to be ineffective in many installations, to chemical treatments which attempt to mask the odors. Please keep in mind that each of these engineering solutions to the odor problem does not actually solve the odor problem. These filters and chemical treatments are either attempting to absorb the smell or cover up one smell with another smell. They do not eliminate the actual odor because they don't remove the cause of the odor, raw sewage smells. And it smells even worse when the conditions become anaerobic, which can produce the rotten egg odor of hydrogen sulfide. And OSHA lists both short and long-term health effects from exposure to hydrogen sulfide on their website. If you look online or speak to utility operators who maintain these in other municipalities, you'll learn odor is a common complaint. While it's easy for someone who does not live in the neighborhood to say it's no big deal, it doesn't take away the fact that there is an odor. And the fact, the Woolen Mills pump station that was mentioned earlier was actually removed due to odor complaints. Odor is a big deal, considering the proposed pump station will be completely surrounded by current and future Fry Spring residents, whose homes, property values, and potentially their health could suffer if this pump station is installed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Casey.
I'll spare you, Jewelli.
Jewelli. Thank you.
As stated, my name is Casey Jewelli. I am here before you on behalf of this group to express our concern that the sewer pumping station is proposed to be privately owned and operated. Per the draft provided by the developer in declaration of covenants and restrictions, the homeowners association will be responsible for common maintenance facilities. This includes the proposed sewer pumping station and in addition, sewer lines, retaining walls, and storm drainage facilities. According to Robert Nordlum of the consulting firm Association Reserves, as many as 70% of these HOAs are undercapitalized. We believe that the relatively small size of the proposed HOA, the scope of its responsibilities, and the unknown timeline for projection, project completion places this HOA in the more than likely position of being undercapitalized. Any failure of this pump station may result in a human health hazard. We believe that expecting the HOA to own, operate, maintain, and have sufficient funding to completely replace one of these systems is unreasonable. We believe it is in the best interest of the community that the developer be required to provide this commission and council an assessment of the envisioned capital adequacy of the HOA, not only in an expected case, but in a case that contemplates unforeseen circumstances. At a minimum, this should include a reserve study and sample capital budget. These submissions should then be made available for public review and comment. We believe that this review is a prudent requirement to understand and manage the risks, not only for those who live or will live in the immediate area, but for all city residents, as they may be asked to fund remediation of, in the case of failure. Lastly, there have been preliminary discussions in these chambers where it has been suggested that, in the case of HOA failure, the city will assume responsibility for the sewer pumping station and make its own assessment to homeowners for the cost of maintenance. There is no guarantee for this, and we don't see how this could easily be reassured, given the number of unknown factors. And so anyway, in conclusion, thank you for your serious consideration of this matter that could greatly affect the livability for the residents of the Fry Springs neighborhood.
Thank you. Jessie Harper?
Hi. Thank you. When we received the letter from the city about this application, it stated that a gravity-fed sewer is not possible for this development, given the topography. That statement is not factual, as you asked the question. It is possible. Matt elfely confirmed that in a conversation with me. A gravity-fed sewer was recommended by Ray Nestor in his original response to the development. He said that the city prefers a gravity-fed sewer for this development. It is still the best long-term solution. The reason for this application is because Core Azalea LLC did not procure easements from the adjacent property owners on Monte Vista, because they didn't offer an amount that was commensurate with the value of what they were seeking to purchase. So the reason they aren't doing it is for cost savings, and Mr. Schimp confirmed that. The reason they won't do a sewer is because it costs too much money. So this isn't ultimately a cost-saving measure for the city. It's a measure to maximize the profit margin of this development. The City Code, Section 34-157, sets the general standards for when to approve or deny special use permit. It asks whether the proposed use or development will have any potential adverse impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, such as dust, odor, fumes, and other factors which adversely affect the natural environment. There's more in that section, and it is worthy of review, because this application seems to contradict not just one, but many of the guidelines in that section. Noise and smell in particular. In the application, the applicant says that you wouldn't smell it unless you were standing on top of it. I wanted to verify the validity of this claim, so I called a sewage plant manager in Chesterfield County, who has employed with the wastewater utility for thirty-seven years. He told me he's responsible for thirty-two of these pumping stations. He laughed when I read the statement. He said, "The most common complaints they get about these pumping stations concern the smell and the noise." And as Jess mentioned earlier, every solution only masks the smell. When I asked him about his experience with smell mitigation, he said, "It amounts to putting perfume on the sewage. The smell is still there. It's sewage. It stinks, and there is no solution to that." So this application, when they say it doesn't smell, there's an intent to mislead you all on the fact of the smell, because a profit margin is at stake. If they are forced to do what the city actually recommends and what the utility recommends, they will have to pay the landowners a fair market price for the easements.
Thank you. Samuel Johnston?
Thank you. I want to thank all the members of the commission for this hearing and this opportunity to present our concerns. And, you know, I want to, my name is Sam Johnston. I'm an environmental attorney. I'm a property owner whose property in the Fry Springs neighborhood borders on this proposed project. And I want to make a couple of general comments in reflection of, you know, sort of the general purpose here, and which is to provide information for the public. And I've heard a lot of very good questions from the commissioners, and I want to thank you for those questions. I have not heard, not particularly satisfied with a lot of the answers in terms, and so basically, I want to say, we need more information. You know, particularly with respect to the impacts. You know, in any environmental assessment of a project like this, the public has a right to know what the impacts are going to be and how those impacts will be minimized first and then mitigated. And, you know, one area of the impacts, and I note that the chair has brought up this issue of rainfall, which we had a very extensive rainfall last year. And in my opinion, you know, we need to have a much more detailed analysis of the cumulative impacts of the peak flows, which are foreseeable, in combination with rainfall from climate change. We all remember the rains from last spring. Well, those, that level of water is expected to be dumped here again. And so, you know, the impacts of this foreseeable water and sewage runoff from this project need to be analyzed. We need to have those peak flows quantified. We need to have them determine what the impacts will be on watersheds, on wildlife, and on the neighboring values. In that regard as well, I understand Morris Creek to be an impaired waterway. This was brought up before. I'd like to see more analysis of that. It was troubling to me to see staff hesitate to call the waterway that is going to be impacted, really possibly destroyed by this project, to call it a stream. I think it's a stream. I think it's, may well be a federal jurisdictional water, which would implicate federal law. And that's something that, you know, needs to be taken into consideration. And I would note that the city's, quote, "Input for Virginia's Phase Two Watershed Implementation Plan, dated February of 2012," calls for, among other policies, maintaining the designation of a 100-foot riparian buffer on the city's three main waterways, one of which is Morris Creek. So if you're gonna maintain a 100-foot riparian buffer on Morris Creek, it only makes sense to maintain, I would say, at least a 50-foot buffer on a tributary to that creek, such as would be impacted by this project. So in conclusion, I would urge you to maintain and remember your duties as trustees of the public trust, to maintain the values of the public trust and the public health.
Thank you. Jason Bishop?
Good evening. Thanks for this forum. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you guys tonight. I guess I'm the lead organizer. Everyone that came here to support the concerns that the preceding speakers spoke to, can please stand up? So the community is engaged. Thank you, guys. And thanks for showing up.
Can you just please state your name really quick?
Yes, Jason Bishop.
Thank you.
106 Azalea. So I don't have any technical comments for you, but I just wanted to state that I've spoken to a lot of people about this, about this development, and nobody is in support of a development like this. It's simply not in concert with the surrounding neighborhood. Look at this diagram. Look at the size of the houses relative to the size of the lots for the proposed development. And look at the already existing lots and their houses. This pump station is another way that is not in concert with the surrounding neighborhood. It's not, there's not another one in the whole city. So, we appreciate this forum. We're gonna act aggressively. We're gonna state our concerns in a concise way. We certainly could have everyone in this room come up here and give you guys an earful for three minutes. We're not gonna do that. But we do want you to take our considerations seriously, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Susan Quinn?
Good evening, commissioners and counselors. I'm Susan Quinn. I live in the Fry Springs neighborhood. I'm a member of the board of the Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to read a statement from the Neighborhood Association. The Fry Springs Neighborhood Association, FSNA, welcomes appropriately-designed infill in the new neighbors that it brings. The FSNA respects the rights of property owners to pursue all legal activity on their private property, while recognizing that some activities can result in negative impacts elsewhere in our community. Regarding the application for a special use permit for the proposed Bellevue development, which the Planning Commission is discussing tonight, the FSNA and the community we represent have concerns that a sanitary sewer pump station could have long-term negative impacts on the adjacent properties and the neighborhood. Specifically, the FSNA has five concerns. One, odors are a common issue with sanitary sewer pump stations, and citing the pump station in the valley will result in lingering odor. Two, the planned location has a high water table, evidenced by naturally occurring springs, and any flaws in the construction would allow water in, potentially resulting in failure and overflows. Charlottesville City Code does not currently specify best engineering practices for installing a pump station. That was number three. Number four, Charlottesville City Code currently does not allow city utilities to step in if the pump station fails, a situation which could result in the release of raw sewage into the backyards of Fry Springs residents, the adjacent Azalea Park and Morris Creek, which is already impaired for bacteria. Number five, maintenance and replacement of the sanitary sewer pump station are planned as the responsibility of a homeowners association. If the HOA does not plan its finances properly or fails, the city may be forced to take action, potentially incurring substantial cost to city taxpayers. At the very minimum, approval of a special use permit to allow the installation of sanitary sewer pump station should be delayed until the necessary regulations are in place to address how the city will handle cost, operation, maintenance, and replacement of a pump station located on private property, should the HOA fail. In summary, given the site conditions and the lack of appropriate code to address contingencies, the FSNA does not support the proposed solution at this time and urges the commissioners and the city to deny the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. That is everyone on the list that has signed up. If there's anyone else that would like to speak at this time, please come forward, state your name, and you will also have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Stuart Wilson. I live at 318 Monte Vista Avenue. I also worked for thirty-five years with the Rivanna Water and Sewer Authority. One of, I wasn't directly involved, but one of the main problems that we would get complaint-wise from the citizens, right after the actual treatment plant themselves, was pump stations. Aeration doesn't work. Try filling a bucket with sewage and blowing through a hose, and tell me how much better it smells. And we tried also carbon filters. Those are pretty ineffective as well. From what I understand, there is a chemical solution that can aerate the water without agitating it and setting it up aerosols and all those other things. I believe it's called bioxide, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Rivanna has started using that at a lot of their pump stations. They've had, especially out at the Farmington Country Club pump station, they've had many, many, many complaints. And from what I understand, they've gone down significantly with that use. I would also like to say that when I bought the house almost thirty years ago, I knew there was a subdivision planted in there. I had no idea it would require a pump station, though. Unlike the folks in the Woolen Mills, who bought houses in an area with an existing pump station and didn't stop whining about it for years, these folks didn't have that choice when they bought their houses. So I guess that's all I really want to say. But also, the noise can be a problem, too, because the air compressors is what makes the most noise, not the sewage pumps, if they do use the air compressor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name's Christopher McQuell, and I'm a licensed professional engineer, wastewater engineer, and I, my family has property on Monte Vista. Just two things to draw attention to. It was discussed, the idea of having a package plant to treat the water and then discharge, I guess, to the creek at the bottom of the hill. That would, odors from that would be, only exasperate the problem. If you're worried about a pump station, it's gonna be worse with that. The other thing is, the discharge to the sewer line on Monte Vista Avenue, the hydraulic capacity for it to receive water coming from a pump station, I would raise a lot of questions about, because it wasn't really designed for that. Now, some, you know, usually systems are slightly overdesigned, but that would be a red flag. I'm not saying it can't, but that would be a concern that ought to be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. Thanks very much. My name is Nomi Davi. I live in the Fry Springs neighborhood, and I would like to speak about our experiences as residents with living just in front of the Porter Avenue development, which was the most recent development that is still ongoing in Fry Springs, also initiated by Andrew Baldwin. And there's two points that I would like to address, based on our experiences, our interactions with the developers. Number one is the lack of transparency on their behalf, and number two is the lack of enforceability. It seems to me from this meeting today that we, that the development wants to try out an experiment, excuse me, in Fry Springs, and we've been told to accept their assurances that there won't be a smell, that there won't be, that there won't be very much noise, et cetera, et cetera. And our experiences with the developer, in the case of Porter Avenue, were exactly that we were told that there would be a four-way stop sign put on JPA. That never happened. We were told that the tree line would be saved behind our house. That never happened. So there's a consistent problem of lack of transparency. The other point that I would like to make is about lack of enforceability. We've, the Neighborhood Development Services today addressed the fact that if there is, for example, a failure in the system, then zoning regulations kick in. There was also the point brought up about annual maintenance reports that the developer is obligated to make to the city. However, I'd like to point out that Neighborhood Development Services themselves, both in a private meeting with us, as well as in a city commission meeting, admitted publicly that they do not have the enforcement capacity to actually enforce some of the regulations that are in the books. In the case of the development behind us, we were told that City Code regulates that developers must keep twenty percent of the tree canopy, and that if they cut down trees, then they're obliged to replant so that twenty percent of the canopy is maintained. We asked that, we were confirmed, we were told that that was confirmed. However, the developers cut down all the trees, never maintained any of that canopy, and have continued to violate that code. And when I brought this up at a city commission meeting in front of Neighborhood Development Services and Andrew Baldwin regarding this new development, Neighborhood Development Services threw their hands up in the air and said, "Sorry, we don't have the capacity to enforce these regulations." So this is an issue that must be addressed before we're, we're expected to just believe the promises that these developers are making. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Peter Reitmeyer. Just wanted to urge you to do a little Google search on a place called Lake Holiday Estates. It's in Frederick County, Virginia, Cross Junction, Virginia, about fifteen miles north of Winchester. It's a planned unit development, HOA with a terrible, terrible track record. They have their own private utility. They have all of the equipment that they have talked about today, and for probably fifteen years, it was a colossal failure. And that was not due to bad plans. And that was not due to bad planning, it was due to disaffected voluntary board members, of which they had 15 on their utility board and 11 on their HOA. Ultimately, that development was taken over by a special commissioner for Frederick County. Chuck Alton was in receivership for about three and a half years before they ever got it straightened out. Colossal failure. So if you are inclined to believe that 41 homeowners are going to do their due diligence with collecting funding to provide for future reserves for this, I would encourage you to look again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this application? Saying none, I will close the public hearing, and we can go into discussion, or if there are any more questions, we'd like to take five or 10 minutes to...
I'd like to make a motion.
If you want to make a motion, and you... But is there any questions that anyone else would like to ask?
Well, we're still going to hear from utilities right now.
We can do that, if you have questions of them. I think they're here for questions.
Yeah.
I have questions for utilities as well, so...
So we can wait, but I did want to make sure...
Let's go ahead and just do another 10 minutes of questions and then go into discussion. Can we get it done in 10 minutes? Okay. Can we please have some?
I'm Lauren Hildebrand. I'm the Director of Utilities and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
And I've also got Roy Nestor here, who, he's the, one of the utility engineers.
Does city utilities have standards for a lift station?
We do not have standards for a lift station in our Standards and Design Manual because we do not maintain any, currently, we do not have any pump stations. All of our system is entirely gravity-fed within the sewer system, and we maintain 170 miles of gravity sewer within the system.
And so what standard would you use to evaluate the design?
Yeah, currently, Department of Environmental Quality has statewide regulations that we and others have to follow, and the short term is SCAT regs. It stands for Sewer and Collection and Treatment Regulations, and they are regulations that were developed by the state that set standards for how wastewater treatment plants are designed as well as pump stations, as well as gravity sewers are designed.
And do you have the expertise within your staff to be able to review this design against those state standards?
We do. We do have those, that ability to review it.
And why wouldn't the city go ahead and take this over and do a lift station and take this on themselves because it's not only for the development of 40-some houses, but it's also the neighborhood? It's a larger area.
Well, it takes a little different expertise to maintain a pump station than a gravity-fed system. So the expertise is a little different than our typical operations staff that we currently have. It would take someone that's familiar with a control system, electrical systems, mechanical systems. So it's just a little different skill set than we would have as part of our operations staff. So I know within our area, the, we actually consulted with Alamo County Service Authority today, and they, they may, they have certain lift stations they maintain within their system, but they have people that are trained with those kind of skill sets. But they also, with that said, they don't maintain all the pump stations. They have, there's, some of the pump stations within Alamo County are also private. There's several out in the Croze area that are private pump stations, but that's because there is generally no gravity sewer in the area that could serve the system.
And are you familiar with these systems, and can you speak to issues of odor and noise that comparable systems generate?
Yeah, I used to work for an authority where we had over 60 pump stations in and within our system, and actually, it was a, it was a large regional wastewater treatment plant provider. We also maintained over 10 wastewater treatment plants within our authority, and they do emit odors. The whole philosophy behind sewer systems is they kind of breathe a little bit because you don't want them, you know, like, you might walk past a manhole in a street and it'll have little holes in it, and they're designed to breathe a little bit because if they don't breathe, then they can, they can generate a lot of dangerous gases that can blow things up. So you want your sewer system to emit some odors and out into the air, and that's kind of how they're generally managed.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So with the...
Hang on a second. Let's just go down the lines.
Yeah. There's a question about capacity in the sewer line. Have you looked at that? Will you look at that?
We have looked at the capacity of the adjacent gravity system as well as the, along Azalea, as well as the system they're proposing to pump to, and it is an eight-inch line. Generally, eight-inch lines have capacity for about half a million gallons, and this development will generate, on the average, not peak, about 20,000 gallons per day. So it has enough capacity. Where we have to be careful when you, when you design a pump station, you don't want to hold too much back and then pump too much flow all at one time because that can be odorous. There's a balance that you create in the design of your pump stations where you want the force main that's actually forcing flow from the pump to the gravity system to be small enough that it will, and the wet well to be set such that it'll, it'll pump on a regular basis. So the age of the sewer doesn't get too old.
There was also a question about sort of the shape of the land. This is sort of a bowl and odor. Does odor linger? Does it spread? What's your sense of that?
I don't know if I can speak to that. I, I'm sorry, I don't know if I have an opinion. I've sat back and I thought, yeah, probably in a low-lying area, you probably are going to hold some sort of odors, but I don't know if I am an expert to speak to that.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up and chatting with us. My question would be, in the event, and this is to help us mitigate the adverse impacts on the neighborhood, in the event, or if an event occurred where the pump stopped working and they didn't have enough money in their HOA to keep it going, what would the city do to, how would the city handle that, or how would your department handle that?
You know, we've thought a little bit about that, and it's, I don't, I think we would, we would set up something where, you know, I have actually developed some additional language if this, if you decided this would move forward, to be a little more stringent from a, looking at their HOA documents and making sure they had the right wherewithal to finance future capital improvements. And also, if they had, if you'd like to see them, I can propose that at this point. Do you think that's appropriate? I actually drafted some language today with my engineers, along with Lisa Robertson's input, and that may answer some of this.
I'm sorry, what's your name again, ma'am?
Ms. Hildebrand, can the, in chair, let me know if this is out of order, because I like being in order, but is there any way that you could read these so that the public could also have knowledge of what we're looking at?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
And let me just clarify, these are proposed conditions for the SUP that would be infringed upon the HO, the development of the HOA if this were to go through.
In addition to the conditions in the staff report.
Correct, correct, correct.
Right. So I just made some, in the first two recommendations, there's just some clarifying information in the existing conditions. One is, it doesn't enclose the pump station action, it closes the SCADA controls, the shed does, to the pump station. I also added a word "force main" because it's not really a sewer main from the pump station to the gravity sewer for one of the second recommendations. I added some additional language in the operations and maintenance condition where regular maintenance will be conducted by a qualified contractor that is approved by the Director of Utilities. Regular maintenance will be conducted to avoid adverse impact on the city's sewer system. And then some additional proposed conditions. The design will incorporate the Department of Environmental Quality Sewage Collection and Treatments Regulations as well as provisions designated by the Director of Utilities as deemed necessary to assure that there is no negative impact on the city's sewer system. The next condition would be during operation of the pump station, in the event the city's public sewer system experiences a negative impact caused by hydrogen sulfide or any other cause, then the HOA will be responsible for the cost of repairs and remediation of the adverse impact to city's system. If these repairs or remedial actions cannot be made in a timely manner determined by the Department of Utilities, Director of Utilities, then the connection to the city's sewer system will be terminated for the development. The next proposed condition is the landowner shall provide the Director of Utilities a copy of the HOA documents to allow the director to verify that the provisions within the documents are adequate to ensure that the HOA will be responsible for all costs and has all necessary authority to make assessments to landowners within the development to cover all costs of construction, operation, maintenance, and repair of the pump station. At no time shall the city of Charlottesville be responsible for any costs associated with construction, operation, maintenance, or repair of the pump station. The next proposed condition is if a sanitary sewer overflow occurs, the overflow must be reported by the system operator to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality within 24 hours, and then the system operator must submit to Department of Environmental Quality a five-day follow-up report. This is a, this is something that we're required to do if we have a sanitary sewer overflow within our system as an operator. A copy of the initial overflow report to DEQ and the five-day follow-up report shall be delivered to the city's Director of Utilities at the same time as the reports are delivered to DEQ.
If you have any questions.
Ms. Hildebrand, does the city utility have a tap fee established? I know you're a gravity-fed old system, but given that utilities, municipalities all over the state, because the state is growing and the population is growing, other municipalities have had to figure out ways to allow taps into the sewer system. So are there plans for how the city of Charlottesville might do that?
Well, we have what's called a facility fee, which actually, it's intended to handle the capacity, additional requirements for the capacity of the system that currently developers pay, and that's set up by the size of the meter or the, what's called the equivalent residential unit, and it is prorated based on basically the size of the meter. But we do require a, it's called a facility fee within our system.
So there would be a meter where this proposed pump station would connect to the...
Well, the facility fee is applicable to the water meter that is set at the houses, and then it has, the facility fee has a water component and a sewer component, and the intent of that facility fee is to recoup monies that we spend on generating capacity within our system so that we can adequately fund it, whether it's within our system or Rivas' system.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Solzenberg.
Yeah, you mentioned the Standards and Design Manual. There's nothing in it now. I understand that's undergoing revision. Was that part of that discussion into the new SADM, which we're going to be hearing soon?
Actually, we're, we're having, as part of utilities, we are having certain discussions about what we're going to include in that Standards and Design Manual, and then the more detail where you would see the detail on something like a pump station or a gravity sewer, or would be in what we would call construction documents that would be referenced in the Standards and Design Manual.
Gotcha, okay. And then a few commenters have mentioned that there aren't laws in place in our current code for the city to, you know, kind of adequately manage this, especially in, you know, an HOA failure scenario. Are there parts of other cities' codes, whether in Virginia or outside, that are more comprehensive in how they handle pump stations, and is that something we should look at a zoning text amendment for?
This is a special use permit. All the special use permits fall under the zoning ordinance, so that would be under zoning regulations.
Yeah, Lauren's department in the operation of the city's utility is in a different chapter of the City Code.
Gotcha.
And Lauren, Ms. Hildebrand, manages the public system in accordance with sort of a parallel set of regulations and requirements that's in a different chapter.
But we're not, we're not changing that. We're changing the special use permits for the zoning.
Right.
Right. I guess my question broadly then is, like, what do other cities do?
It probably varies. You know, a lot of places, if there's a gravity solution, that's what they would, they would prefer, rather than having a pump station installed, because usually that's long-term maintenance from an electrical standpoint and just a regular check, you know. I know where I used to work, we would always want to take out a service of pump station if there was a gravity solution that was going to be close by, because we would rather not have that long-term maintenance cost.
Yep. And then when they do have pump stations, do they, they have regulations beyond, I guess, well, imposes as conditions, but do they have regulations in the City Code that maybe do things similar to these or more?
There would probably be, there would be design standards that would be followed.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Mitchell.
Let's see. I think you guys have...
You ready?
Yeah, sure.
Fantastic. So based off of what Mr. Solzenberg just said, these are not typically occurring in cities, especially in urban environments, which we are under creating, correct? Because what we've been hearing is that they're in Louisiana, Flavanna, the county, so these are not systems that are typically put in an urban environment.
Usually, you'll, you'll find them located where there is not a gravity solution.
Okay. Which we do have a gravity solution very close.
Yes, it's just, it requires easements.
Easements, right. And so you're saying that the city doesn't want to take that on because of the long-term maintenance cost. What I haven't heard here, and I know we've got several commissioners, Mr. Solzenberg being one, very concerned about affordability of houses. What are we, what do you think this will cost each individual homeowner that purchases a lot in homeowners association fees just for this particular system?
Well, I don't know if it's, if it's applicable, but I do know in, in the authority I used to work, there was a contractor that would regularly maintain household pump stations, and they were usually for government agencies that did not have staff that could do this for them. And generally, the cost ranged, it's probably about $2,000 a month to do regular weekly checks on a pump station, make sure everything's working, make sure the audible alarms are working, the generators run, the, you know, the pumps are greased, or whatever regular maintenance they... maintenance they have to do at that point. But that's what they would charge to do this. I don't know what people around here, I did not check with what people around here would charge.
But what we heard the applicant say is we're talking about, let's see, I wrote that down, $300,000 to $400,000, maybe every 20 years, and that's the cost now, not necessarily what it would be in 20 years.
I think it was 50. 400 was the stormwater.
Yeah, right.
For to replace the pumps, 50,000, 300,000 to 400,000, to replace pumps?
No, 300,000 to 400,000 is the stormwater system, not related. That's another HOA liability, but the pump is like a $50,000 install.
Okay. So we've got pumps, maintenance, and then potential whatever else may happen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I do recall, so we don't really know what monthly cost that might cost the homeowner on top of their unaffordable mortgage that we have in the city right now.
Well, the people I'm familiar with, of course, it's not in our state, it's upwards of $200,000 a month to maintain a pump station.
That was $2,000 a month.
$2,000 a month.
$2,000, about $49, or $41.
But that's maintenance.
Yeah, that's regular maintenance. That's without setting aside capital improvement funds.
And then in the future, if this were to fail, we have a defunct homeowners' association, which I can, I'm going to have comments on that in a minute, being in zoning for 18 Could this be converted to a gravity system in the future at the cost of the homeowners?
If they could acquire the easements through the properties downstream.
So we would put the acquiring of the easements on the new homeowners instead of the developer?
You know, it would have to be, the only way that utilities could get involved is if it's a public health issue typically, where we are, you know, expanding our system and there's a public health kind of issue where we would step in and assist. But for development, typically you don't see utilities anywhere stepping in to condemn for easements.
Okay.
Or help, or making sure that people get the easements that they, the development, making sure they get what they need.
One last question. Your number six additional proposed conditions, and we kind of had a little bit of a chat about this in the pre-meeting. If this were to fail, and the homeowners' association did not have enough money, maybe they've been preparing, but it was just more than they thought, they did not have enough money, and we've got leaking sewage. This condition at the bottom says, then connection to the city sewer system will be terminated. And what I heard you say in pre-meeting was the water will be cut off, so we'll have homeowners in their home that they've purchased. How many of the 49 would have their water cut off so that?
You didn't have overflows? You'd have to cut them all off.
So 49 citizens owning a home in the city would have their water cut off until we could resolve legal issues in order to get this repaired?
Well, the only way you'd be able to stop the health hazard would be to stop the water usage.
Right, right.
Do we shut off people's water when they don't pay their bills?
There's a process for that. I mean, it's not, that's certainly something I can answer, but I don't have it in my head right. There's a long process for that, but that's a different situation.
And is it true it took about $5.2 million for the Ravenna Water and Sewer Department to mitigate the odor control on that? I realize it's a much larger system.
Well, that was actually at the treatment plant.
Right.
And I think it was close to 10 million.
Okay.
So, but I think I'm right about that.
Council, do you have a question?
I'm just, I'm always curious if this staff's general perspective on this project, and like, what, as you guys learn more about it, what is your preferred route with this development?
I mean, since we run a gravity system, that's what we would prefer.
Do you have any to that system? Do you have general notable concerns yourself with this coming into our city's neighborhoods? Or do you feel that enough redundancies are in place and that they've addressed this? I'm just curious of your thoughts on maybe the proposal in front of us.
Typically, my experience with pump stations has been you don't site them very close to the houses because they can be odorous. So that's just my experience with them.
Now I have a question. I'm just really concerned about the homeowners losing access to a system, or, you know, the only way that we can mitigate the issues is to turn their system off, which I think is very different from, you know, we're not turning entire apartment buildings or communities off at the same time. So I think the question that was asked is very different from the homeowner to, you know, without water, and that would be a big concern for me, and the fact that it would, future homeowners, you know, someone coming in just thinking they've purchased a property and they can sign up for this, they might be insured, or you know, homeowners to have to deal with something like this when the system fails.
Yeah, it's different than just not paying your bill, because they're paying HOA dues. Any more questions for the applicant or staff or?
Sorry, go ahead.
I have a question for Ms. Robertson. There was a recommendation from the public that we require financial disclosures from the HOA to see that they can actually take care of this thing, that they have the money to do it. Can we require that?
I don't think we can do that under the zoning regulations. We have asked for copies of the homeowners' association documents. Those are in your packet, they do confirm, you know, the obligation. There's some statutory in Virginia obligations for homeowners' associations. The members of those associations have some fiduciary obligations to actually impose assessments and obtain enough capital reserves, all that sort of thing. It doesn't mean they'll do it, certainly I understand all of those comments, but that's something that's not, in my opinion, within your purview as zoning reviewers.
I have a question for Ms.
Yeah, I guess this is for Lisa. I, sorry, the treatment plant comment reminded me, someone, or we heard mentioned just briefly that an alternative for this is an actual sewage treatment plant on-site. Is that by right? Hopefully not.
If it's allowed, it would be the same type of permit process as this is.
Since I know the answer to this, so should I make a statement about it or should I ask you questions about it?
You feel free to make statements.
When do we start making statements?
I'm making sure everybody gets their questions. I know the answer in my world, but it is still zoning. In the city, if you have a special use permit, and somebody violates the special use permit conditions, how does the city mitigate that?
There are a number of different ways. If something is presenting a serious issue, one way to do it is to go to court and seek an injunction to either preclude somebody from doing the thing or to require them to do a thing. We rarely use that process, but it is available.
So this scenario where we've got a problem, the HOA has been, people have bought in, they've been putting money in, the problem is much bigger than we thought, now we've got to, we've got spillage, we've got to cut the water off, what is the timetable to get a zoning case into court in the city? You first have to give notice.
Well, legally, to get that case through the court would take quite a while. If there was some sort of urgency, if you were dealing with a public health situation that could be called a public nuisance, you could probably get an emergency injunction, a temporary injunction fairly quickly.
What does that get you?
I will say that the remedies for that sort of thing are going to be quicker under the public utilities and public health codes, and as Ms. Hildebrand referred to, even within our utilities chapter, if an individual homeowner has a problem with their service lateral and it's causing a backup in a public sewer or something else, it's a smaller scale but a similar process, that landowner's responsible for resolving any problems that are occurring within the portion of the line they're responsible for, and if that starts creating a public health situation, there are remedies in our utilities code that include on occasion shutting off someone's water or, you know, potentially going to court to require them to make the fix. So it's not an unusual situation. There are health codes and utility codes that allow it to be dealt with, and those would likely be quicker than the zoning route.
If the individual property owner had the thousands of dollars to fix it?
And I will say that we are seeing all over the city the other type of expenditures. I understand all of the issues with this particular expenditure, but we also have obligations under an MS4 permit, and many, many substantial stormwater facilities are being installed in common areas to be maintained by homeowners' associations, and in those situations, if those fail, that's also a substantial burden, and we've got to start thinking about how that's going to work. So the issues, I don't have an answer for you. There are some legal remedies, even within the development, if the members of the homeowners' association are performing their fiduciary duties, the people within the development can bring private actions against those individuals. Leans are placed against properties for charges that have been assessed but not paid. Sometimes you have a situation where everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, but people aren't paying their assessments. There can be special assessments, which can be done quicker than, you know, routine annual assessments as necessary to cover unexpected expenditures. So there's a variety of options, the, these types of associations are used for a number of different types of improvements, and we see them a lot, but certainly the nature of this type of system, because it's so different than what most people are used to, and the, you know, stormwater is very different in terms of your day-to-day life than water and sewer service, so it's a different thing.
But it is passing all of this cost on to the individual homeowner?
For this type of thing, yes, and for other amenities or requirements such as stormwater as well.
I'm sorry, do you mean the individual homeowner that owns the lot that it's on, rather than the other 48?
No, all 49 lots.
Oh, collectively then, okay.
Yeah, all 49 lots.
And do the neighbors have standing to bring private action against the HOA if there are odors or whatever out of compliance with this?
Probably not under the HOA arrangement, but there's also something called a private nuisance, so if somebody's doing something on their property that's presenting a nuisance to you on yours, you have a private right of action relative to that.
I have a question for Ms. Hildebrand. Thank you. You suggested that in other areas, more rural areas, there's a certain amount of space between a pumping station like this and other residences. What is a reasonable buffer?
We would always have it where it would be the, it's always at the back of the subdivision, it's in the low line, because everything has a gravity fee to it. So, I don't know, generally, I don't know, I can get back with you on that. Let me think about that, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so any more questions and we can go into discussion and/or a motion. Discussion? Ben Nishin, go.
So municipalities that are utilities all over the state, especially a growing state, is finding ways to develop, and we have housing issues in Charlottesville, and we're growing. So I'm one that has high level of confidence in what they're called alternative systems. Old municipalities have gravity systems because that's what the technology was 100 years ago. But all over the state, alternative systems and pumps and all these things have been happening, and I think this permit not excluding, that our utilities should begin exploring what that looks like, because that's what you do when you have a growing population. You find alternative systems so that your property values and what the neighborhood association said, respecting the fact that property owners...
Is this an alternative system or a way to pass the extra cost on to the property owner?
Well, I believe gravity systems are better, but they are becoming less and less mandatory because there's more and more people. So I think Charlottesville, if we don't have contingency plans for 10, 20, 30 years out, continued population growth, our utility people might begin making some of those.
But this is not a place where it can't be done. This is a place where...
Exactly.
The easements have not been...
This will happen again. This may be the first special exception before the commission, but it won't be the last. So this permit not excluding, I'm just thinking that we probably should have a review so that we have guidelines as opposed to having a special exception every time.
Well, I guess my rebuttal to that comment would be Charlottesville is only a 10-square-mile radius as it is, so I don't foresee us growing but so much more anyway to necessarily need the subpo. And as far as the review goes, we want to have, we want to, I guess I don't, I feel like we should, we need more information before we can say that it's actually an alternative.
I think our utilities need to provide us with where we're going in 10, 20 years, because I think you are going to grow. And so it's going to look like that. And municipalities with gravity systems are having to look at how do you grow?
This is not an alternative system. This is a rural system.
It is.
And we're, and you were one of the biggest proponents for density and urbanism.
Exactly. And there are systems in place in old municipalities that are also utilities, where you have to say, how are we going to accommodate a higher population? And it won't always be gravity.
And that's fine.
That's all I'm saying.
But we are passing along cost unnecessarily to people that are about to own homes. Let me throw this out here with urbanism. Don't you think that that could be more lots if we're not trying to put a pump station there to give more housing? And what you want to have is more density?
In our conference, we're having a discussion.
Well, it's illegal.
About, yeah.
It's illegal to have more lots.
It's illegal. So it's a special exception, but it's not going to be the first one.
Not soon, since you want to do a new zoning license.
I'd love for it to not be legal, and yeah, I think that's a great point that we should probably allow more density in places where you don't need stuff like this.
This is a special exception.
This is a special use permit. This is not a special exception.
Special use permit, and it won't be the last one we see, especially as the population stress continues.
You're exactly right.
And so I think we need some kind of study that says, where are we going to go so that we don't have to have special exception, or special use permit after special use permit after special use permit? And so that's my comment, is this...
I would bet my house that we're not going to need special use permits for this because people are going to tie into the city utility system so that the city can use this. We are creating an urban environment. What we are talking about doing with this special use permit is putting a rural...
System.
...system in an urban environment because the developer doesn't want to pay potentially the cost to get the easements in order to make this happen.
And I'm agreeing with you, I just don't want to always be talking to developers. I want our city utilities, and we all live here, to give us some guidance as we look 10, 20 years into the future, what, how are we going to do this?
And I think that's a great thing.
I'm inclined to agree with Lisa here.
But I've been on this commission 10 years, and in the city 18 years, and this is the first one I've seen.
Okay, it won't be the last.
But look, aren't all... Are you mad at those 10 selfish property owners that like, I mean, I get that $25 million is a low ball and they could ask for more money, but they didn't even respond. And now they're going to force this on all of them because they're not even going to respond? I should be mad at them.
This is going around and around, so I'd like to make a motion if I may.
Why not? Because you want to stop us.
Y'all don't know what you're talking about.
Madam Chair, would you please gain control?
Yes, please. So you had a motion?
I do. I move to deny the application. The potential adverse impacts of the sanitary pump could create problems in the neighborhood and the surrounding environment.
I'd like to second that motion.
Second.
We've already seconded it.
Oh, sorry.
So we have a motion on the floor to deny based on, and I'm
The adverse impact of the
Adverse impacts of, so from 34, 157.
Noise, lights, dust.
Say again? Noise, light, dust.
Potentially adverse impacts on surrounding neighborhoods specifically in the matter of noise, lights, dust, odor, fumes, vibrations and other factors which adversely affect the natural environment.
Yes.
And then we have a second.
I'll second it.
We got two seconds. And we have two seconds.
I don't know.
I'll third it.
Is there any more discussion before we
I do have one discussion, and I know I'm playing devil's advocate here, but somebody has to. I am very concerned with the impacts that it can have on the surrounding neighborhood. But I'm also concerned with how do we develop this property?
Absolutely.
Because if we are not going to approve the sub pump or whatever the correct name is, I'm going to call it the pump, and the property owners will not, regardless of whether he offers with, or whoever owns the land offers what they offer, or they increase the offer, if the other property owners will not grant them the easement, then where do they go from here? Do we just not develop the property? Are we back at another special use permit for?
This isn't the only problem. This is the first problem.
Are we back at a special, another special
Well, I'm not done. Wait, hang on, hang on, hang on. Okay, hang on.
That's rude. So my question is, is I am not, I'm pretty much against the pump because of the impacts of the neighborhood, but at the same time, are we just going in circles? Because if he's not going to get the easement or regardless of who owns the property, how is it going to be developed? Are we going to be right back at this in another year or two?
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. But you have to take a look, and this is a zoning issue. We're putting utilities in a zoning issue. So let me give you some context. So for those who don't do zoning, know what we're talking about. When you put this in a zoning issue and we're talking about passing along this cost. I have a house. I own a house. I've owned it for 17 years. I have a city easement on it where a developer came in and wanted to chintz out. Half of my property is washing away. Guess who's going to have to absorb the cost? Do you know what the cost is? I don't have an HOA. So somewhere, aside from paying my kids college, I'm going to spend $20,000 because we allowed a developer to come in here and do a cheap way out. Now, you all sit in these commission meetings day after day after day and we talk about density, especially you two, density, 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 and affordability. We are not making these lots affordable by having this system put into place. And you're right. They could rezone it and make more lots and more density, but we need to tie into the systems that we do have, that we do know works, that the city is going to maintain and not pass these costs alone along to these property owners who I guarantee you, because I do it every single solitary day, are happy homeowners. They're coming in, they want to go into Fry Springs, and I promise you, they're not reading all the content. Now, guess what? That's not our fault, that's not the developer's fault, but it is the nature of new homeowners. They have no idea what they're signing on at all until it fails and somebody comes to you and now you've got 50% of your mortgage, 50% of your, and we know it because we just got a housing assessment. People are paying 50% of their earnings on housing. And they don't have $20,000 laying around. Probably they don't have $1,000 laying around. We can't sit up here and talk out of both sides of our mouth and talk about affordability and density and do a suburban rural pump station in the middle of one of our, what you want to be one of our most urban areas.
So I think we
Okay, we, I'm sorry. Well, we had to have some discussion. So I apologize, I'm a little passionate about this.
So I still go back to my original question. If they're not, and I'm totally fine with voting it down, but with that vote, I want to know what happens next. If he can't get the easements, do we just say we don't develop the property?
I think we can come up with some solutions for that. I think there's a way to do that. I mean, we've got a lot of different plans and we've got a lot of different things in the city. Maybe someone like comes along and says, we're going to make an entire affordable, and we get some money from the city to do an affordable housing throughout all that. How awesome would that be? I don't know. I just think there, you want alternatives. I think there are better alternatives than a rural area system.
And that's what I'm trying to say. What we do with this permit is one thing, but we can learn from this moment and ask of our utilities, let's plan for what's going to come so that we have some capacities and alternatives.
And folks, y'all may have clapped, but you're not going to like this. It's going to develop. I'm sorry.
We want to be good neighbors, all of us.
That's right. Look, I didn't want CityWalk to develop. That's all I get to see now. But it is, it did. Here we are. So
Let me chance we can
So anyway, I've got a motion on the floor and we've got a second.
And a third.
And a third. Ms. Christie, will you call, roll?
Mr. LaHondro?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
No.
Ms. Dow?
This is for the denial.
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye.
The motion for denial passes. That is all we have on the agenda for the public, the agenda that we have gotten in front of us that was posted. We still have the matter of Mr. Stolzenberg that has been brought to us to do a zoning text amendment or at least to research a zoning text amendment in Fry Springs.
Does anyone have a question about that zoning text amendment?
Okay.
Is it to, what is, let me word this correctly. What is your goal? I know you said to go from R1 to R2. Is that to create more density, is to create more affordability? Can you give me a little bit more background of where we're going?
So about 34 of the parcels I have in mind are already single-family attached and they're non-conforming. So I'd like to just bring those into conforming status because it seems unreasonable that they've been down zoned like that. And the remaining ones are exactly that, yeah, is that right now we're seeing all these really large, really expensive, half million dollar new houses pop up in Fry Spring, which even though the northwest part of Fry Spring is really expensive, that's not really what Fry Spring looks like. It's mostly $150,000, $200,000 houses. And as is, those giant expensive houses are all you can build. And that doesn't make sense if we want to have homes that people can afford and make room for more people to move in.
I guess I get that, but I also, and not to say that we shouldn't do it, I'm just trying to throw everything out there, but that's like a general thing going on across the city.
Yes.
It's not just Fry Springs. That's everywhere. Everywhere we turn, there's this new development that is not affordable. 80% AMI is not affordable to the city. So I just am curious as to what's going to make Fry Springs different than any other neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it is fundamentally different and, I mean, I'm sure you know I want kind of broader zoning reform too. I think what makes it, why I'm bringing it up specifically now is the sort of sense of urgency I see because like of those five vacant greenfield areas, all of them have been transacted or are just about to start getting stuff built on them. And so while I'd like to see us do this on the whole across the city in the new comp plan and new zoning code, and I think we, I mean, we already have consensus that we're going to allow, you know, up to fourplexes in every zone, this is probably going to happen faster than that.
Nothing has been passed on that, and we are the planning commission, and that hasn't gone to the city council.
That's true.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's why I think we need to get it to city council and into the zoning ordinance here before it, you know.
Can I comment on Rory's process?
Yeah.
All right. And because the process is set in place, the process is set in place just for this so that there can be from the public, quick action. And so he, I'm, you know, whether we like it or not, that is what we have, that a citizen can come and make a motion and we have to deal with it, right?
Only planning
Not necessarily.
Or the property owner or council.
But I'd like to
But that's what I mean. So I don't fault Rory for that. And I think what he was asking was that there be consideration.
I agree.
Action.
But I have a question for you. Because you've said a lot of things. We have a process in place. The only thing I've heard from Mr. Stolzenberg is aye. So me, I take my position on this planning commission as a governmental body for the people, not my own personal wants and desires, because I've got a lot of personal wants and desires for the city of Charlottesville, but they're not my personal wants and desires. We have a public process. And so typically speaking, the neighbor, you know, go to a neighborhood association, they might bring it to us and say, this is, hey, guys, can you consider this? But I'm sorry, Mr. Stolzenberg, the only thing I've heard from you is, I have an agenda. I want this. And I didn't, I don't know what body you're representing other than yourself.
Myself? I don't live in Fry Spring anymore. I'm saying that I, as a planning commissioner, have made an observation that the face of Fry Spring is changing based on the laws that we have put into place and were entrusted with the stewardship of.
But we're entrusted with the stewardship for the people, not our own personal
I might add, when Fry Spring Neighborhood Association introduced a down zoning in 2014, they didn't have authority to do that. They didn't own any of the pieces of property, so they couldn't make a petition to council to change it or to us. They had to get a sympathetic counselor to do it for them. But our ordinance says that planning commissioners
Who came to you?
No one came to me.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So my own opinion here is that I don't feel competent to vote on something that is brand new to me, and I don't think this is a benign request because it does take staff time. And we have to look at the staff workload and understand what the priorities are before we start to commit them to doing something else. So I would like to put this off until a work session, until we have time to, and then sort of frame what it is we're going to talk about so I can do some research ahead of time. And let's have a work session and talk about it and also be able to talk and let staff have a chance to look at their workload and see how this might fit in if it does.
We also have a housing needs assessment that is being, you know, HAC is looked at, and that is being very much researched as, so that we have a plan to do this as opposed to just picking an area because I used to live there and I like it. So I think that we have a plan, and you're right, it does consider staff time.
Yes.
So we can vote on that.
We can.
So again, I think this is just to initiate the discussion and the natural result of initiating it would be having that work session and discussion about it.
So there's a motion to, from you to initiate discussion. Do you have a timetable?
No.
Okay. And we have a second.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
And I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. I don't think that it was the worst thing in the world. I think we do need to be aware of things like this, not only in Fry Springs, but throughout the city, so people who have lived here can continue to. I just don't think that it was delivered in the best approach and that's why it's not getting the best feedback. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no. And if, actually, I'd love to hear what the best practice is way to propose something like this.
In a work session.
Is. We don't have work sessions.
Or when we're in here. I think the bigger issue was, is that if we are going to be a body, the head, the arms and the legs have to move together. And the fact that one of the arms, the head didn't know what the arm was doing and none of the legs knew either. So we were all very surprised about this. I think as a body, we should have had a discussion about this first, especially before it was presented in council chambers to the public. We had no clue, the public has no clue. The only person who was clued in was you. So I don't think it was necessarily a bad idea. I think the way it was presented and went about was not proper. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. And I apologize for that. I mean, I think my understanding of the way the ordinance was written at least is like that now would be the proper time to just kind of make a motion in the meeting and then, you know, once we initiate discussion is when all that later stuff happens. So I didn't mean to like spring this upon you guys and I don't have an ulterior motive here. But yeah, I think we should talk about it.
Well, I agree, and I think maybe another appropriate way is, we just had a conversation that we have nothing on the April work session, and I feel like, you know, bring it to Missy. That's the other thing, staff didn't even have the knowledge of this. So Missy might, could have been able to guide you and say, hey, maybe we could put this on this work session. We don't have anything on a work session. But we do have a work plan, right, from council?
Well, it's all on hold. I mean, we're, in fact, you know, any sort of zoning idea that is more than something small tweak that's not going to require significant communication public-wise, we would at this point in time refer to that process that is currently not in our control. Now, you had updates that I didn't have today, so that was helpful on the process with, I know that the RFP is being constructed. We've been given some information that there's hopes, well, at least on the staff side, we're hoping that the position will be filled before that RFP hits the streets because it's really difficult to hire somebody and then say, here's your thing. We feel like it would be much more helpful if they, there's something to start with and then they guide that before it goes out so that they have ownership of that process because that's going to be super key there. But we're awaiting next steps on that. And I know that we would get pushback on any sort of thing that was more than just very simple for that process. Now, whether that's right or wrong or how individuals feel about that, that's a whole different ballgame. But we're right now have been guided on this path to the RFP and the position to happen in some timeframe and then that process to move forward our processes here. So I know it's vague and some of the control that you all had over pieces of that is kind of on hold. And I know, you know, there was a, it was nice to have a bit of a break from that, but I know that, you know, there is a lot of hope to be able to jump back in there and be able to finish some of those things. Yeah, I think we're still in that holding pattern until that comes to light. And then, you know, it'll be interesting to see if the new city manager has some insight that they would like to put into this situation and how that dynamic will change or affect or not. So I think we've, we're in a tough situation, at least from that perspective. I mean, I believe, you know, if you guys are interested in continuing to have conversations about different things, I think it would be helpful for you all to structure them in such a way that, you know, you're, you've got a concern or a topic and then you've got potential outcomes so that you're not just talking in circles and meeting just to meet and discuss. I mean, I know I love hanging out with you guys too, but, you know, I would like that this to be a productive experience for you all as well.
So Lyle, with your last Housing Advisory Commission meeting, I know the housing needs assessment is there, the housing strategy is a huge part of this so that we don't go off with a patchwork quilt of a city. Have you heard anything else about that strategy? Because I know this is Have you heard anything else about that strategy? Because I know this is part of the RFP.
Right. Last, I did have an update for that. Last, we discussed it, we were waiting on some details from the planning commission. So hopefully that will move forward and we'll be able to get that done. The, I, I did wanna comment, as the chair of the planning subcommittee, let's see, I think two years ago, the HAC recommended updating the ADU ordinance, nothing has been done. About a year ago, we recommended updating the frontage requirements and minimum lot size requirements, nothing has been done. We have a whole pipeline of sort of quick fixes.
Those are not quick fixes. Those, those are significant discussion items. There, there are a number of the boards and commissions around the community that have been putting together a lot of really good information. And we, you know, the commission, maybe the composition of the group was a little bit different, but went through a number of, of issues, including those, and noted that, you know, specifically the frontages and some of those things needed to be done in the context of other things. So, you know, I guess a, a quick fix from a zoning perspective, I guess the most recent thing that we've had, and even that was pretty controversial, was allowing for a drive-through restaurant in the highway corridor. And that wasn't, that wasn't, you know, an easy conversation, if you all will recall that. And that's been probably, you know, that's a quick fix. The frontage changes and all of those kind of things are gonna have a lot of discussion from a lot of different community partners. You know, one group's gonna think one thing of it, other groups are gonna think another. It's gonna be a big conversation. So, sorry, not a quick fix.
Surely there is something we can do.
So if I can just weigh in from broad-brush legal perspective, part of the reason we're in this fix is we haven't been doing this following the methodology we're supposed to use.
That's right.
Our comp plan does not give us adequate guidance, and we've been, since 2003 or longer, we just have been doing what you all are trying to do now. It's just, you've got great ideas, you come up with them, let's try this. But they're not in furtherance of strategic goals and objectives. And until we get that framework in place, that's not just, just visions and values, but it's actually a guideline. Our subdivision ordinance, which establishes a lot of frontage requirements, lengths of streets, how the street grid, all that sort of stuff, you can't do it in a way that's gonna fix the problems you wanna fix. You just can't do it. One of the best things you did in recent years was adopt the streets that were documented. That is a document that gives you very specific guidance. You still have to apply it through ordinances in, in specific context, on the ground, on a map. But if the rest of your comp plan gave you as much guidance and instruction as that does, you could be off to the races tomorrow. But we don't have that. Until you get that, you are just banging your heads against the wall.
As long as the zoning ordinance is then fixed to match the comp plan.
Right, and hopefully, a great result out of this would be a comp plan update, varies, with very specific concentration on the land use plan, including affordable housing, and sort of simultaneous development of ordinance provisions to implement those recommendations.
And that is what is in the RFP process to have brought forth.
And as always, we're waiting just to take the first step.
As a third, as a third part of that is also the housing strategy.
Yep.
So we can talk, and we can change a comp plan, and we can change this. I mean, you can buy a wheel to make a bicycle, but if you don't buy the rest of the parts, you're not gonna have a bicycle. The wheels still roll down the road, but you don't have a bicycle. And all we're doing is acquiring parts, and we've been doing that, you're right, forever, and it has been the most frustrating thing I've done. So August 2020, I'm not, I'm looking forward to it. I'm counting down, because I, I can't be reappointed. But it is my most frustrating part to this, is that it all hasn't talked to each other at all. And what, the biggest mistake we made is not, and I don't know why it happened, not making the changes to the zoning ordinance on that 2013 comp plan. And I don't know why it hap, didn't happen.
Well, even then, our, historically, our comp plan, we really wanted to incorporate a lot of interests, a lot of values, but we've been a little short on practical guidance.
Well, and, and, and it also ends up towards the end, is all, the comp, comp plan can tell you whatever you want it to say to you. And we've had a difficult time in the community taking hard lines on things. And, you know, that's something that, that has to come to pass. It has to be a decision that we're gonna be this, or we're gonna be that, or, you know, a, a range of something. Whereas, you know, it's been difficult to get folks to be able to grasp, as a larger community, that kind of thing. Because change is hard, as we all well know. And, you know, we've, we've tried a few bigger zoning-type things, and, you know, the time just wasn't right. And so we're hopeful that, you know, coordinating these things together. You know, it's been determined that bringing in a group to do this, hopefully to be able to guide the community in such a way that, you know, with that outside expertise, potentially, that we'll be able to make some steps forward in this. But yeah, I know it's, it's really frustrating. It's frustrating to, to, yeah. But we have the tools that we have. We're doing the best we can with the tools that we have.
I, I can't.
We don't have the tools we have yet, we need yet. We don't have the tools we need yet.
I, I can't help but feeling that, that we started this, seven laypeople told to relook, look again and redo the comp plan, and none of us had ever done a comp plan before. We made it up as, as we went along. If we had had the professional guidance from the beginning, that would have helped us, that would have directed us and, and given us a structure that we could have gone down, instead of trying to make it up as we went along.
So I'm gonna just throw this out here, and if y'all wanna cut my head off, you gotta catch me first. But I, and this is just, once again, my personal opinion, I feel like when we started on our update, we were fine just being seven laypeople. I think the incidents that have occurred in Charlottesville about two years ago now have blown up, and we're trying to wrap everything that has happened, fix the solutions of over three, four hundred years in one document at one time. Sometimes I think we just need to take a step back, and I'm not saying start completely over, but start over. We cannot wrap everything into one thing. It's just, it's never gonna work.
And all of these things end up taking time. One of the examples that, that I use is the change from comp plans of old to the 2003 comp plan, and kind of the, or 2001 comp plan, and the build from there. The vision in the 2001 comp plan has been built on West Main. You may feel one way or another about how that ended up, but the vision in the comp plan denotes bringing housing for students closer into the university, making a more walkable community. And that vision has come to pass, whether, you know, people feel lots of different ways about it. That took a long time, took an awful long time. We never would have thought, you know, the zoning ordinance prior to 2003 allowed for a hundred and some-story buildings, like way higher than it's allowed now. You know, and that, that had been on the books forever.
Maybe not a hundred stories.
Well, it was. Sorry, not stories, I'm thinking feet. It was, it was into the feet, not the stories. But the, the, the market and where the community was at that point in time, it had, construction of that was just not something that came to pass. And look at the changes that we've had over time. I'm not putting a value on how you, how individuals or how anyone feels about that. But, you know, so we have had some, some changes that have come over time. They come, they're slow. They are slow. And, you know, the folks back in 2001, things now, you know, it's very, very big changes.
Also remember, we are a advisory commission to council. They do not and have not taken what we have voted on. So we may say, yes, put six plexes every, everything. That doesn't mean they're gonna vote for it. So we did not have the votes for the things that happened on West Main. The planning commission did not recommend all that. Council went and did it anyway. We did not recommend a hotel at Cherry and Rich Street, and we have a hotel. So you have to keep that in mind, too. We are just advisory to council.
We have been reminded by the public, a couple of speakers, of our duties as commissioners, and I think we've done a good job. I think Rory's apology notwithstanding, he did demonstrate before the public that there are ways to bring things that are presenting, as well as the staff's approach to making sure we have a workable workload. Both of those are in the system for a reason. Now, I think something you did tonight was great, too. When, when the discussion was over, you spoke to the public, and you told them, this is going to be, they did not wanna hear that. But you did, you acted well, too, and I think that's what I want, is maybe our new town manager can help this body realize that we all need to serve what our duty is in front of the public, and that's really the best neighbors we, we are. Where we show them how we work together, both quick response if it need be, or the long-term.
But the wheels of justice move extremely slowly, okay?
But there are ways.
There are wheels, and there are ways, but they do move slowly, and especially when it comes to enforcement, when we put things in place, and we have these ideas as we sit here, oh, we've got enforcement, let's just do that. So I can tell you that an enforcement action under the zoning ordinance, it can take up to four months for the first time before you get into a judge to get in action. And so that's why I was like, we cannot have people sit there with their water turned off for four months if they don't have the money to pay for this. Again, that's that action. But we have these things, and it is slow. It is slow. It's not fun, by any stretch of the imagination, but it is a unfortunate, slow process. But the flip side of that is, if it moves too fast and we don't put all the pieces together, then all the wheels on the bicycle are on the front, and we have no back wheel, and we're not, we're not doing the right plan.
The public does need to see that we can be responsive. That, and that, that's, that's the real.
So to bring this all back to the motion on the floor, though I think, I appreciate that general discussion about, you know, kind of what we're doing here, I think it was really important, and I think it provides context for this. So my goal here is that, given that we have the tools that we have, the 2013 comp plan, and urgency here, because this, in two years, this will have already happened and will be locked in for the next fifty years, my goal was to, for this to be kind of a manageable chunk that we could look at with our existing set of tools and the existing comp plan, which calls for up to fifteen dwelling units per acre. And I did think that this was gonna be quick, because I very much thought of this initiation motion as a, hey, guys, you wanna talk about it? And then all of the talking about it would be later.
Would this be more of a form of a small-area plan, but it's an entire neighborhood? I mean, that's the other thing. If you've got an entire neighborhood, but let's think about how long it's taking to talk about a small-area plan.
But why does it need to be so much?
Why don't we pick a workshop? I'll provide you all with some information about the categories of things you're supposed to look at when you're making this type of zoning change, and then you all can decide whether or not you're ready now, or whether you wanna roll it into the comp plan process to actually undertake the studies and the analysis you need to do to move forward with that type of a change.
I think a workshop is a great idea.
So, the Aug-April work, work session?
If you would like.
Can you get it done again?
Yeah. My, my job is easy. I've just gotta give you the list of things that you're supposed to study and consider before you make a, you know, you adopt a zoning ordinance.
And you can lay out what it is that we're supposed to study.
Yeah, I've got a code section that has a list for you.
Can I also request that if we can put this together, that it be a, a ten-minute with the, with the new city manager? When we do this workshop, that we, we.
He won't be here till May thirteen.
No, he's not gonna be here in April.
You can't get this. You're gonna get a workshop before May fif- thirteen?
Yeah, the April twenty-third, work session.
Oh, during our work session for.
Work session, yes, okay.
Well.
I, I just think we need to have a really big-picture discussion, as Mr. LaHendro said, of what the work is for staff to actually do a good analysis. Everybody sort of is so familiar with the city, you know, you think you know what the patterns of development are. But it, a professional planner actually has a process they go through to look at trends, to look at development patterns, to look at previous comp plans, the current comp plan, where the zoning ordinance has gone. They've got a list of things they're supposed to take into consideration, including affordability of housing and all of that. But it's not, it's a, it's a process that deserves more recognition than, than just a small discussion. And just, we need for you all to, to know what gets rolled into that, and then you all make a decision about whether you wanna move forward with that analysis and assembling that information for actual consideration of, of rezoning. But typically, regardless of whether you're upzoning or downzoning, typically, when you're looking at doing it for a major public policy reason, you're looking at an area very specifically. And it's not just, oh, let's, I don't think these six lots are zoned correctly or for their best use. Let's look at it in the larger context of the whole neighborhood or this whole area. And it's usually preferable to do it at the same time you're updating the comp plan.
I was about to say, aren't we already working on that technically with the land use map?
Yeah. But if we have that professional staff to do that, why didn't we have that for our comp plan, which is what Mr. LaHendro said?
Well, when I'm using those terms, I'm talking about Missy and your planners, who have, or your professional staff on staff. I don't know the answer to that other question. I think you all did great work, but I think Ms. Dowell is correct. Circumstances intervened, but I think you made a lot of progress, you had a lot of great ideas, and I believe that those ideas are going to be shared with whoever is awarded the contract, and the idea is to, to continue to build on those so that your work isn't just set aside. You did a lot of good work on that stuff, so.
But anything we do has to have community outreach and community engagement.
Which you did a lot of.
Right.
It's just, it has to be updated.
Whatever we do now, especially with the housing needs assessment and the housing study, strategic plan, that's gonna have to have, so it's not just like we can initiate a zoning text amendment, and in July, we make a zoning change.
And you have to talk to the neighborhood. I mean, within the last five years, they, they didn't want it going in that direction.
Some of them didn't. I wasn't consulted, and I lived in a two flex in Fry Spring at the time.
I'm just saying, there's a larger process that you have to plan for as you go through this. It hasn't been unusual over the years for somebody to put on an agenda the initiation of a change and then to study it. But the question is, what level of study does staff have capacity for? And do you wanna start right now before the larger comp plan update gets finished?
I would recommend no, because that's, almost, that's half of the reason why we in the situation we're in. We keep putting the cart before the horse. Let's get our comp plan done first, and I'm not saying that that's not a good idea, because I just don't like the way you went about it personally. I don't think that wanting to get more information and learn more about our city is ever a bad thing. But let's stop working in circles, because, you know, I do not like coming to these meetings just to meet the meet, like Missy said. If we have our comp plan done, then instead of just doing it parcel by parcel or neighborhood by neighborhood, don't we need to redo our zoning text amendment, I mean, our zoning text anyway? So if we wait, not saying that it's not important, but if we do it at the right time, we can do it one time. Do the comprehensive plan, and then do the zoning text to match what we've already set forth in the comp plan.
But if you talk about, if she brings back to us what it would take to look at this, you'd need to also bring back the zoning that we have in place, because we can't redo the zoning. For just the Fry Springs neighborhood.
Right.
Why not?
Why not?
'Cause we're not, it's, we don't have a form-based code in place right now, and the zoning is for the city as a whole.
You mean like the zoning text?
You wanna create an overlay district for?
Rather than the map?
I'm talking, I'm talking about the zoning text.
I got you.
You, you, we'd have to do an entire overlay district to be able to do a zoning ordinance for Fry Springs.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, again, yeah, I'm only thinking about some minor tweaks to the map. And, I mean, I totally get where you're coming from, but I kinda feel like we're kind of running in place right now, and this whole thing is meeting just to meet, like, I've been here for six, I mean, you wanna know what really prompted this? Is, I had a site visit last month before that Lyman Street application, and I talked to a guy who was rooting for those houses to go in there, because it was gonna raise his property value so much, and he was hoping that the drinking and smoking neighbors who lived behind him, who have apparently lived there for 50 years, were gonna get priced out of their neighborhood, and he was rooting for all that. And then I started thinking about, well, what the hell am I even doing here? And I started thinking about, I don't know if you remember this, Jody, but in June 2017, I was at the, the phase one comp plan kickoff, and I was sitting at your table, and I put a star right on Fry Spring, and I said, if it wasn't for that affordable apartment, that, that single-family attached house there that I could live in for $350 a month, I would not have stayed in Charlottesville, and I wouldn't be here. And those are gonna disappear.
I, I totally agree, but I think that what Ms. Dow said earlier is, right now, if we don't put this housing need assessment so that we have the tools in place to do it affordably, as much as it, it costs right now, we're gonna get just, we don't have, I mean, the only thing affordable we've got is five or 10 years. So, I don't think that, that organically happens, and I don't think right now we have the tools in place to make, to, to zone that in right now.
I mean, I agree. I think we need a ton of changes to the zoning ordinance and a whole new comp plan, and there's a lot of work to be done. That's why I'm saying, maybe let's start doing something, take this little chunk, I mean, we're just gonna make, like, 30 parcels, be able to have single-family attached houses. We're not making groundbreaking changes here. Half of them already have single-family attached parcels, or houses on them, and they're just illegal now. Nonconforming, sorry. I know you guys don't like when I say illegal.
Is that right?
I don't know.
Okay.
Is it right that they're single-family attached in R1, S?
No, 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 no.
Many of them are. There's, there's a lot of, that.
There's legal nonconforming and there's illegal nonconforming.
I know. I like to make a motion, or want our motion? Can we vote?
Yes. And, so can I just find out, what, are we voting to have a discussion at a work session? Is that where we are at this point?
Yes. Isn't having a work session, doesn't that require initiating the discussion?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, there was a motion to initiate, somebody seconded it.
Okay, we have a motion to initiate, and somebody seconded it. There's not a timeframe.
Right. Now, what you have to decide is, do you want to go ahead and initiate, and if you do so, what is your first step in that process of studying how to develop the amendments that you might later bring forward for public hearing?
And when you say might later, just so we have clarity, like, what does later look like? What does that timetable look like?
That's what you need to figure out.
So, if we make a motion, approve this motion, we need to then come back with steps to tell you, okay, we wanna have this in this timeframe, and this is what we want it to look like?
And, and I'd also, I think Rory can, can probably do this, but get some, some bullets and some things on paper, 'cause we've kinda been in a lot of places. I, I, you know, I've got kinda the gist of the R1 to R2 in certain places, but some thoughts that we can look at.
If you're not ready to initiate tonight, you could vote the motion down, and then Rory could work with the chair and staff to develop an agenda item and have a discussion on your work session to talk about what he's trying to do. I can also talk about how you go about studying what he wants to do, and you can have a discussion without there being an actual initiated thing on the table.
Does this have to go to council to put on the work plan so that the staff has time for this?
No, you all can discuss whatever you want to discuss and, and make decisions about what you wanna study.
So, if we vote this down, then it would be up to Rory to initiate that? There's no direction to the staff?
Rory can just call the chair and Missy and say, I'd like to have an agenda item on the April workshop, I'd like to explain what I was trying to do, get your input, and let's make a decision together about whether we wanna take it any further at this point in time. That's a secondary option to the one that's on the table for your motion.
Is, I guess I'm just not clear on how that path looks different if we did initiate it. I mean, wouldn't that then lead to a work session where we discussed it, and then eventually an item?
I think that, that some of your colleagues and, and us a little bit as well. So, usually when we bring an initiation forward, there's an attached document that will note the code sections, that would give a paragraph about what specifically is being talked about and kind of what the goal is, and I think that, and, and y'all, y'all definitely jump in if I'm, if I'm, you know, off-base here, but I, I think since it just kinda came as a surprise, that people didn't have a chance for it to sink in, and so they don't necessarily feel as comfortable saying, oh, yeah, okay, that, that sounds good, 'cause they didn't have the digestion time. You're, you're more of a reaction, and then a lot of folks have more of a take it in and let it soothe a little bit to figure it out. So, I think that's a little bit of, of what's going on. I, I, I think it's just the.
Yeah, I mean, that seems reasonable. I mean, if we're gonna actually put that on the work session agenda, then I'll withdraw my motion.
Perfect.
But I'm not the only person.
All right, so Rory is gonna get some things in writing by the end of the week, because the packet has to go out on Tuesday.
If it's gonna happen this month.
Yeah, if you, if you all want to do.
What do we have on the agenda for May?
Um, May, you don't have anything set right this minute.
So, if it doesn't make April, it couldn't?
Yes, and, and, and that decision needs to be made pretty quick, 'cause the packet goes out next Tuesday, if y'all are gonna have a work session, 'cause we announce those and, and such, and you all have preparation time, those kinds of things.
So, we need to vote on anything?
No.
Not necessarily.
If you withdrew a motion?
Are you gonna withdraw?
Are you gonna put it on the work session agenda?
Are you gonna speak with us and follow the process?
Sure.
Perfect.
Hold on.
I move to, what do we adjourn until the second Tuesday in May?
I'd like to second that. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
Thank you, patient people.